All right. Good evening, everybody. We have a couple of things that are going to happen this evening first. We're going to start with a short special meeting. And then we'll get into our work session. So. Welcome now to the October thirteenth special board meeting. Kenzie, can we please call roll?
Becker.
Here.
McCoy.
Oh, sorry. McCoy is excused.
Lyerly.
Here.
Gerlach.
Here.
Minnow.
Here.
Cannell.
Here.
Meister.
Here.
Right. All board members are either present or accounted for. So we'll move to the action item to A. Lynn, are you, you're still brooding up Samantha, can you please read the motion?
I move that the employment of staff as presented be approved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Kenzie?
Online voting is now open.
I'm having technical issues. I vote yes.
Andrew, are you able to vote online?
You get it?
Yes. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. And that is the one agenda item in the special board meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. Thank you. We're going to transition directly over to the next meeting, which is the October thirteenth work session. One second, please. Okay, so now we're going to transition over to the October thirteenth work session. We will call roll once again.
Meister. Here. Cannell. Here. Minnow.
Here.
Gerlach.
Yeah.
Lyerly.
Here.
McCoy.
Still excused.
Becker.
Here.
All board members are accounted for. So we'll go into a public forum. And we have several speakers have, if you are wanting to address the board this evening and you have not filled out. A form to do so, you have some time. We have several speakers. All right. First, we'll hear from Jeff DeGrave. As you come forward, please remember to give your name, your address, and then you'll have five minutes.
Hello, I am Jeff DeGrave, ten fifty-five South Northview Road, Green Bay, Wisconsin, five four three one one. I'm a father of three, all went through the Green Bay school system. My son currently is a sophomore there. I have a simple statement. Why is nobody standing up for the well behaved, average, hardworking student in the classroom? If you are an A, B, or C student, there is no support, no extra effort given to those students. We spend lots of money on students that need help or the students that are way above average. My son isn't gifted and talented. Since third grade, all I get is a little email telling me that he's doing fine and keep going. No one on one work, that teacher has never, or that person has never met my son. My son, his teachers have documented that he is basically boarding class and that he needs to move on. And so basically, we're paying a huge amount of money for the gifted and talented program that's not serving our children. Second of all. I see young students. And they're not all treated equally or fairly. Students can curse, threaten, hit, disrupt other students in class with no consequences. I think that's part of our safety and security issue. That we need to have consequences, the same consequences for every and all students in every school. It has to be a outline thing where every school, you do this, this is the consequence. I know there are special exceptions, but it needs to be a standard one for covering all of our schools, elementary through high school. Every principal has to be on the same page. Every school has to be on the same page. I'm also advocating for my son. He is in esports and he is in Preble Trap. We spend millions and millions of dollars on facilities, equipment. We pay coaches, we pay for transportation for all of these high end sports. But yet the small sports, FFA, esports, trap, DECA, all those things are on their own. They're required to basically raise money to keep going. I am a coach. I am paying my own way to be a coach. And that's fine by me. But if we're going to do it for one, we need to do it all. I hear the word equality all the time. We're not really accomplishing that, in my opinion. The other thing I want to get into is curriculum. My son was given four books to read for ELA. Of those books, one is about police brutality. Once, one is about systemic racism. One is about a town whore because they needed a town whore. Can't we go with positive books, something that encourages a child to want to read? I mean, Call the Wild, Red Bad and Courage, inspiring books, books that keep kids interested. These books don't. And to have only four books, and when I talked to curriculum last year about this subject, the person I talked to, I have never felt more down talked, disregarded. Like she, I don't want to say names, but that is a person that should not be talking to anybody in public the way she talked to me. If we were anywhere but the school system, someone talked to me, I would have said my piece. That is not a good representation of what we have going on here. We have such excellent, excellent programs. But yet our people fail to push those out sometimes. The other thing is the math curriculum. My son for four times in his 10 years that we have changed the math curriculum. My daughter had the math curriculum changed. I spent money on a tutor so she could learn, memorize, and do her math, which my son learned and he picked up from her. With this new Bridges math, it doesn't even apply. And I hope we're going to go back because math hasn't changed. Math is math. I look at my grandfather, my father, who can say, I want to plant one hundred and thirty-three acres of soybeans, or one hundred and thirty-three acres of soybeans, and I want one hundred and fifty pounds. And he can tell me exactly how much soybeans I need in his head. It's amazing. Kids can't do that now. Where did the math change? Where did we, we lose that? I mean, I can do it on paper, but kids can't even do that now. I think we need to go back to the basics of learning. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeGrave. Next is Jason DeGrave. I'm sorry, Jackson. Apologize.
Hi, I'm Jackson DeGrave. I'm a fifteen year old Preble student. I live at ten fifty-five South Northview Road, Green Bay, Wisconsin. My intention for coming here today was to talk about the books of racism, sex, and police brutality that we are being forced to read in the LA class. Unfortunately, that will have to wait because, again, the district is focusing more on punishing the good kids and rewarding the bad. The clear, the clear backpack policy was the first step in punishing the good. I accepted this policy and I customized my backpack and changed what and how I carried my stuff to school every day. Good kid, following the rules. I didn't feel any safer. My family spent money on following the rules. Now the three week old policy or policy is up for change again. No surprise to anyone put the band put the band on or problems on side. Never get to the root of the problem, just patch it. All who attend school know what the problem is. It's the no consequences for bad kids. It's the lack of leadership from this board. This administration, it's not supporting our staff, parents, or our students. It's funny how we're promised to be informed about school situations. But yet again, I learned about these possible changes through local media. Again, promises broken. A perfect example of this board not following their own promises, let me guess, there will be no consequences. This policy makes no sense. First backpacks will not be, or the backpacks won't fit in lockers. Lockers are way too small. Second, the passing time does not allow me to get across the building to my locker and then back across the building where I need to be at my class in time. Much less to switch what I need for each class. This leads to tardiness, more wasted time. We make exemptions for sports banned. What about kids who have to bring their stuff for all other activities after school? We were supposed to have an alestroll, but instead we stayed in class. We just discussed situations. There's no practice. A major failure, a major failure of this school. I'm speaking to you in person. I hope we haven't again to have no audio like our last public address. As a student who is supposed to enjoy school, learn, and grow into a community ready adult, I'm spending more time worrying about safety, addressing our board's failures, and watching fellow students become increasingly frustrated at school. I think it's time for a change. I think it's time you start listening to us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jackson. All right. Next is Everett Olson.
Hello, I'm Everett Olson. I live on ten eighty-nine Dulspen Street. Nice to see you, Vicki. I think she's kind of new here. She's been here for about a year or two now, in your position. So I hear a lot of complaining about a lot of things. Obviously, you guys hear that a lot. I'm not here to like advocate for either side. I'm involved in the community with my daughter having school within the Brown County and my, my son as well with special needs. But there's some big changes coming to Green Bay. They have a Star Elementary coming to the district, which is going to bring in a lot of new teachers, staff, and curriculum that you're discussing. But other than that, that's not what I came to talk about today. Just wanted to say like, that's pretty cool news and exciting stuff. Sorry, this is my first time at a board meeting, so a little nervous, but I came here to talk about the kind of backpack thing that you guys are talking about. I'm not really familiar with the whole scenario of Preble or whatever really happened, but being proactive. People, I assume, called in saying, hey, what are you guys going to do about this? And instead of saying nothing, you did something. Maybe it's not a long term thing. I'm hoping that's not the case because clear backpacks are not going to be a long term thing. The cost effective wise, it's not going to be cost effective. You have eight schools that this affects, middle school and the high school. So it's about four thousand students that it affects. And if you're going to be cost effective, those backpacks probably cost, when I looked up, ten to thirteen dollars. That is equal about forty thousand dollars per year, which is not something that falls back on the parents of the city. It's not a requirement for you guys to pay for supplies. It's actually, education is intended to be free. We do donate and provide assistance with the school district because your guys' funding isn't always meeting where we'd like it to be, but it's not mandatory for us to do that. So I would hope that this isn't a long term thing cost effective wise. It does not make sense. I know that initially, people definitely would have said something about metal detectors, right? It's the first thought. And of course, that's going to take you guys to go look and find contractors and people that are insured and approved. So it takes time, but it's, it's good that you did something. And people are like, that's not going to work, right? Clearly, you can put like a non-clear backpack inside of a backpack. And it also, not just that, it's people have their personal things in there. It takes away from that individuality. I mean, that's important as well. It's just not going to be a long term thing. It's not going to, it's not going to work. So with having eight schools and needing two doors for fire code purposes, you would need two metal detectors. And with that cost, they're between thirty-five hundred and six thousand dollars on average in the state. That's not including the maintenance. But that's a one time cost. And with that math, that equals out about sixty-five thousand dollars. So you spent forty thousand dollars on clear backpacks, not to compare the two, but in people's heads, they're thinking, why this and not this? It's, you did something and then hopefully there's something in the future. I'm here in hopes that you guys can give me a response back as to what, is this a long term thing or is this just something instead of nothing for now? Because they've obviously got people that are worried about it. And there's Department of Health Services and there's, you know, they're right down the road, CLTS. They have people that do security and they contract with the state already. I kind of reached out a little bit. Hopefully, you guys can find somebody to contract for the metal detector things. It would be a big contract for them. Just hoping that the safety of our kids in the schools and our community will have something that's long term effective and cost effective using the tax dollars of the people to be cost effective in a way that's going to provide everybody with a sense of, don't waste money, don't waste time. We want to feel assured that everybody's safe. So that's, that's why I came here.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Okay, next is Christina Josky.
Hello, my name is Christina Josky. I live at one nineteen South Jackson Street in Green Bay. My concerns, I'm sure, are very similar to a lot of people here tonight, and I'm concerned about school safety. The concerns that I have are regarding school safety at school sponsored events. There's been a lot of talk about how to keep kids, kids safe during the regular school hours from beginning to start end of the school day. But there's not been any conversation that I have seen about at sporting events, school dances, musicals, academic competitions, solo ensemble, whatever. I have submitted through the, at the roundtable, I submitted a card to ask about that through the different FAQ forums, and I haven't even seen any, we're still working on it, kind of comments. The school sponsored events are just that, they are school sponsored. When my kids are within the walls of the school, whether it be for English class or for forensics competitions, their safety is in parts because of and responsibility of the school district. And I have not seen anything about, will there be vague bans at forensics competitions? Are we going to start vague checks at football games? Are we going to have an increased presence at Friday night football games? If a student's willing to bring a gun into the classroom, they are probably, they could be just as likely to have a beef with someone outside of the football game on Friday nights. And I have not seen anything. Furthermore, if we start, you know, branching out and discussing safety at extracurricular events, what kind of standards do we hold students from another school district to? If we're competing against Bayport or Notre Dame or Sheboygan or Schwabannon, are they going to be subject to clear bags? Are their parents going to be subject to, you know, we, we really need to start having these conversations because there are a lot of implications. And I have not seen these kinds of conversations. We have not gone to a school sponsored event since this incident because there is no clarity. I just, and the last point of this is, how are we going to educate the public about safe procedures at these kinds of events? Do we have evacuation routes posted on the outside of the auditorium when you're at a musical? Our exits clearly marked at the football stadium, or is there just the one entrance for paid, you know, entrance? And every other gate is locked and we're going to have people flocking to locked gates? Like, there just isn't education happening about how to keep the general public safe when we are in a school space. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Josky. All right. Next is Sarah Lamb.
My name is Sarah Lamb. I live at eight five three Calogh Street in Green Bay. And I'm here speaking on behalf of myself as an individual and not representing any group or organization. And I just want to start by saying that I'm a very enthusiastic supporter of the Green Bay area public schools and very grateful for the rich educational experiences that my kids have in the district. And I just want to share my perspective for your consideration as you make these difficult decisions. I'm from Hong Kong and completed my schooling there from preschool all the way through high school. And from that perspective, the thought of having metal detectors in a school is incomprehensible. Yet here and now, it immediately comes to mind as a possible option. I think we should all pause and think about that, and we can't let that feel normal. That is not normal. If we were asked to picture a school where we want our kids to learn, most of us would see smiles. We would see faces deeply focused on a project. We would hear discussion, debate, and laughter. I doubt that many of us would picture security lines or locker searches. I want schools where my children's stress comes from grappling with tough questions, being challenged to try hard things, learning how to navigate friendships. Not from feeling constantly reminded of danger or being sent the unintended message that they're being viewed with suspicion. I know that all of our district leaders want the same for our children. I understand how frightening this has been for all of us. Both of my children attend district schools and my spouse teaches in the district. All of my closest loved ones spend their days in district schools. Like every parent here, I want them to come home safe at the end of the day. That's why I feel a lot of empathy for you all as board members. You're being asked to solve a problem that reaches far beyond the district's control. We shouldn't have children who want to bring guns to school. When that happens, it reflects a deeper failure in our community systems, failures we must confront together. A child shouldn't be able to access a gun so easily. This too is a systemic failure. Focusing only on school security is not going to address these root causes. And as a parent and community member, I commit to advocating for solutions that prevent violence at its source. When we focus only on what the schools can do, we are making our own children pay the price of safety. I owe it to my children not to put that burden on them, and I hope that my fellow parents and community members will join me. The district's vision calls for a thriving, equitable learning environment. I hope that as you make these decisions about safety, equity remains central. Ensuring that every student, regardless of background, can experience school as a place of belonging, growth, and engagement. You have a responsibility to understand the implications of your decisions. Please read the research on bias in school discipline and on the school to prison pipeline and on the special education to prison pipeline. It shows that students with disabilities, black and brown students, and especially boys, are more likely to face harsher exclusionary discipline actions such as suspensions. And this often has severe impacts on their life outcomes. Being suspended for many children is a turning point. The changes, their outcomes for the rest of their lives in many facets of life. And after gun incidents, research shows that districts often double down on these types of disciplinary practices despite the harm that they can cause. As you look at the evidence on various measures that you are considering, please look at how they impact safety and how they impact disparities and outcomes. When you accepted your positions as board members, you made a commitment to all students. You owe it to all students, not just some, not just those with the loudest voices or those whose parents have the loudest voices, to make decisions that promote safety and belonging for every student. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Damian. Damian Dorn.
Good evening, everyone. Everyone, I am one of those preschool to prison pipeline survivors. All right. So my first couple of times I fumbled, so I had to write stuff down. Good evening, good evening, board members, superintendents, and community partners. My name is Damian Dorn. I am the executive director of Youth Empowerment Summit and founder of Mr. Green Bay LLC. And I'm here to collaborate, not criticize. I believe when schools, families, and community leaders move in alignment, our youth win every single time. And tonight I want to speak on the safety, academics, and opportunity because each of these connect directly to mental health, emotional health, social health of our students. When we talk about safety, I hope we remember real safety starts with connection, not control. Metal detectors and clear backpacks might create compliance, but they don't create trust. Our young people need to be seen, heard, and guided, not just monitored. I urge this board to invest in preventative relationships with programs like Yes, Brothers Helping Brothers, Dads That Do, that train mentors and community fathers in de-escalation, emotional intelligence, and restorative response. Give our youth someone to run to, not just something to run from. This agenda mentions new reading and math goals, but we know test scores are not the result of how, we both, we all know that the test scores are the result of how a student feels about themselves and their environment. When we teach students to own their stories, write their truth, and see themselves in success, scores rise naturally. I'm asking G BAPS to consider or to include creative writing, storytelling, and self-expression workshops as part of the literacy plans, not extras. Let's measure growth through confidence and comprehension, not just percentages. As a district expands, universal screening, let's make sure we don't reduce children to data points. Data without context can label a child instead of liberate one. Train our educators to interpret the data through trauma-informed, bias-aware lens. Every number on a spreadsheet represents a name, a face, a life story, and sometimes a simple cry for help. I'm excited to hear a charter update because I'm working to establish Legacy Academy of Wellness and Excellence myself, which will be a community-based, instrumentally chartered focus on mental health, leadership, and life skills. We're not asking the district to complete, to compete. We're offering to collaborate and help reduce suspensions, violence, and dropouts. Please keep space at a table for a community leader such as myself. Innovation that will grow from Green Bay soil. And as you finalize the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget, I ask that we invest in prevention, mentorship, and engagement, not just reaction and consequence and discipline. We need Youth Empowerment Innovation Fund that supports programs like mine to build belonging after school circles, youth, youth employment, leadership development, and mental health education, along with emotional IQ awareness. Every dollar we spend nurturing potential saves ten, I'm sorry, every dollar we spend nurturing potentially saves ten times the amount cleaning up the aftermath or neglect. When the high school schedule changes, let's make sure it creates time for students to breathe, to reflect and reset. Let's give them a thirty minute mindful Monday or a, or a legacy lab. Each would, each could, each could transform behavior and the morale, which is what we need. And as job descriptions are updated, I hope to see language requiring cultural competency. And as job descriptions are updated, I hope to see language requiring cultural competency. You know, as this board doesn't represent all of its population, student population. Hopefully, it has restored to practice and emotional intelligence training in the role of every teacher that touches our youth, because from what I understand, there's no real, you know, continued education for the educators, which I find interesting. Our children don't just need better grades, they need better grace, better leaders. Let's make Green Bay the model for what it looks like when education meets empathy. Thank you for your time and keeping youth empowerment at the center of every decision you make. I really hope to be one of your chosen partners as I am a survivor and I know how this exact school district treated me when I moved here from Illinois. And it's been thirty-some years, and we're still having some of those problems at a very large scale, so. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. And this is last call because this is my last sheet. So Ms. Jackson?
Good evening. My name is Ms. Jackson. I am a parent, a youth activist, a community activist. Again, as we look around, you guys are not the voice for our kids. You're not, you don't voice, your concerns don't match up with the concerns. You're not the voice of our kind in our community. So I feel, yes, very unsafe as well for our students. The fact that with block scheduling, block scheduling, I had a student at East High School. At East High School, I had two kids at East High School. My sophomore, I kept getting complaints, kept getting calls because he's just not attending class. He's leaving halfway out. It went on for a while. He's roaming the hallways. When he roamed the hallways, he got criminalized by certain staff and SROs in the school because he couldn't just sit for that long. I had him making a decision quick, and I transferred to Preble High School. Yes, last year, middle of the year, transferred. It took him a long time to fit in and to get into his own shoes and his own space at Preble High School. As we speak now, my student, he's doing, he's thriving. He is beyond, yes, Preble High School is unsafe. The teachers and staff, certain staff are very unsafe. But my child is thriving around the doors. He's showing up to all those classes. He knows he has to be accountable because he is an athlete as well. Dope athlete. I mean, last year, last week, he had four touchdowns in a game. So it's like, when it comes to leading our kids in the correct way and taking accountability, I have beyond done that as a parent, a youth activist, or whatever position I'm in. So when it comes to block, block, I have major concerns. It doesn't cut. Phone policies. I've had conversations numerous times with Vicki as well. And I also know that when I was present over at Preble High School during the week of the gun found in the bookbag and the fights that were going on, me, maybe because I was minding everyone else's business in school as well and continued to keep our kids safe while we're present, walking around and looking in classrooms, you know, see if everything's going okay. Well, I noticed, I thought we had a phone policy. I thought they had to be up. Well, to see certain teachers are letting students be on their phones in school and in class, it causes major concern. What are we doing? When we are, you, we leave our kids in your guys' hands and we're asking for clarification of what is the discipline? What's going to happen to my child if he has his phone or whatever it is? What is, what is the consequences? But at this point, it's like, damn. This teacher's doing it, this teacher's doing it. Now this student gets into a different classroom and can't, that student has his phone, and here comes the teacher and student like, hey, in this class she lets us do it, but we can't do it here. We have to pick and choose our battles. We have to pick and choose our battles. If our teachers and staff don't want to step up to the table and do their job the correct way, we're going to have problems. And these problems has lingered into suspensions. There's no reason why our kids are getting suspended on a daily, and it's almost 10 kids daily from each school are getting suspended. So let's pick and choose. You say your teachers are trained for this. You guys train. Well, what kind of training did you do for this phone policy? Concerns. Now I'm going to get off the parent real quick because I feel, let me get out of that. So again, when I say Ms. Jackson, Taisha Jackson, or Esha, or the community activist, or the community leader, or whatever, in that position, I've been targeted and harassed in all these positions by certain staff in our, in our school district, at certain schools. When it's time to hold our teachers accountable for mistreatment, hey, shame on you. You can't stand up for kids. Prime example, we had a child that was in a body restraint bed because he smelled like marijuana, and they carried him out like that. While your SROs and two certain staff sat in a bedroom, sat, not a bedroom, but in the room that child was in, and watched him get mistreated. Mistreated for smelling like marijuana. Did our support team of the East High School, did we reach out to the parents, say, hey, I have concerns. This is what happened? No, there was no kind of communication, no kind of outreach. The only outreach was me and my partner, hey, what's going on? Showing up. That's not okay. So and then the fact that communication around the table, I'll answer you in a second when I get done. Over at Preble High School, when the gun, how did that gun trigger in here? How did that linger in here? Let's get to the ground root. The ground root is, there's been so much things that's been going on, and we have to leave it for our school admins to take care of. But our school admins are not being compliant with their boss, with their, with their superintendents and, hey, we have this going on. How can you help us? No, they're leaving it for the district to dig out information when things come up.
Ms. Jackson?
Yeah.
Your time's expired.
Oh, thanks. Well, you know.
I'll let you wrap up for 15 seconds.
Okay. Well, anyways, I'm Ms. Jackson. If you have any questions, you may talk to me.
Thank you.
James?
Yes.
One more came through. I don't know if this is for tonight, but just in case. The person's name is Jacob Hanson.
Is Jacob present?
Okay.
Okay. Are you sure he's not online? He wouldn't be online. Okay. All right, that concludes our public forum. We'll move on to the strategic planning agenda item, so 3A. And I think that we'll invite several to the table. Welcome. Are we all good? All right. David?
Good evening, board, student leaders, and the community. We are coming to you this October with our monthly update on the strategic plan. One of the four strategic priorities voted by the board was academic excellence. And I have a team with me. My remarks will be short. I'll set it up, and then they will lead you through the presentation. Eager to hear any questions you have or comments that you might have. Tonight, we're going to focus on a component that is especially timely within our strategic actions throughout the year, and that is the use of universal screeners. We'll take a little time to help explain what those are, how they're used. About this time last month, there was data released publicly and shared by the media around academic proficiency across all grade levels. I want, I want the board and the community to know that come November, we will provide an update on the DPI school report cards and district report cards at this table. So we'll address that in a larger context of the report cards. The intent tonight is to stay pretty focused on screeners and what it's telling us about our students' progress here now about a month and a half into the school year. I'm going to introduce the team. With me tonight is Angie LaCombe, Director of Teaching and Learning, Jamie Krewalt, Director of Literacy, Jess Van den Hoewel, Associate Director of Data and Assessment, and Jen Tremblay, Associate Director of Multilingual Programs. Who's going first? Okay.
Before you start, Angie, will there be opportunities for us to ask questions? If you want to organize questions that we ask, just let us know when a good opportunity is to ask.
Okay, thank you. Angie LaCombe, Director of Curriculum. Thanks for having us here tonight. I am the facilitator of the Academic Excellence Work Group and so happy to kick us off with an overview. I'm just going to figure out where I need to point this. There we go. Sorry, Alex. So as we think through academic excellence, one of the pieces that we want to always focus on, right, is the portrait of a graduate. So this is our visual representation of what our community has hoped for, our Green Bay graduates. And tonight, we're going to really focus in on academic achievers, where we are focusing in on students having high expectations for their academic goals and also committing to that learning that it takes to be able to get to those goals. And we, as supports for students, will be thinking about and discussing tonight how we, as teachers, as parents, and even as students, how we can continue those conversations and stay informed through data so that we can support this whole picture of the portrait of a graduate. Again, as David mentioned, last spring, the board adopted these strategic priorities. We have four of those. Tonight, we're going to focus on academic excellence. I don't know. Sorry. There goes our. There you go. No, that's good. So again, tonight, we're going to focus on academic excellence, which you can read there in the bottom, is the continuous pursuit of acquiring knowledge and skills, where students demonstrate intellectual growth and achieve their highest potential in their learning endeavors. Tonight, we're going to talk about, I'll give you a little overview. We're going to think about our goals, going to talk about our initial findings, some learnings that we've had already this year, and then some implications and next steps that we have in this area. That's the wrong way. Oh, I went the wrong way. I'm sorry. So our strategic goals, those are long-range goals. Our goals, there are six of them in the academic excellence area. And our goals are set for June of 2030. Tonight, again, the two that are highlighted there are focusing on ELA and math, in which we are expecting to meet or exceed the annual state average for both ELA and math. In order to do that, we need to be able to set goals and benchmarks year by year. You can go ahead. Our benchmarks for this year are to increase by 4% in ELA and in mathematics. Again, there are other benchmarks for each of the areas, but tonight we'll focus in on ELA and math. The strategic actions that we have come from those benchmarks. So in order to have the benchmarks in place after this first year, we wanted to focus in on some strategic actions that are really going to help us to hone in on the things that we need to be able to focus on so that we can move those, those 4%. Tonight, again, as David mentioned, we're going to be focusing in on the third one that you see on the screen. That is to install the universal screeners and to talk about a data analysis protocol. However, throughout the year, we'll be back and we'll be talking about each of those strategic actions more in depth. We have a dashboard that you're all familiar with that shows our progress and helps us to be able to monitor the actions that we are working toward. So the top visual that you see there, those are the two goals that we've talked about so far tonight. And they show our starting point and then our expected outcomes for the year 2030. Right now, we are at about 33% in ELA, and then we have 35% for math achievement. The state average is right around 50% for each of those areas. And so we do have lofty goals for the next five years. And those benchmarks that you see that we've talked about, and then the action steps underneath are going to help us get there. The action steps, those are the bottom visual. And this dashboard helps us to be able to see how are we doing on those and to report our progress so that we can all continue to have these conversations. Right now, for each of the action steps that we have for academic excellence, we are on track in each of those. We are, as, we're where we expected to be. So most of them are on track. One, we have not started, but that is because we have a plan to do that in the upcoming month. So again, tonight, our strategic action that we're really going to focus in on is the installation of the universal screeners and the creation of a data analysis protocol. We've chosen to focus in on this one because we've just installed those universal screeners in this past fall. And so this is a really timely meeting to have to be able to further discuss the screeners. So at this point, I am going to turn it over to Jess and Jamie to give us more details about those universal screeners, including our findings and some of our learnings. But are there any questions for me at this point during this transition? Yeah.
Would you please define universal screener?
Sorry, Jess and Jamie are actually going to go ahead and do that in the next couple of slides.
All right, perfect. So just what you asked for, what is a universal screener? Universal screeners are excellent for catching some of that large-grain data and trends for students in the subjects that they're assessing. So we have screeners in place for foundational literacy. Those were put in place last year with AmesWeb. And then we also have ELA and math screeners going through some of the secondary levels of schooling. And when we're talking about getting the big picture, large-grain data, our screeners are meant to answer and to inform those three questions in blue there. They're really for the big picture. A screener can tell us where are students generally ready? How are they doing relative to a national norm of other students who have taken that same screener? And also across the year, how are they progressing toward proficiency? And that's something that we will continue to report to you as we have our baseline now from the fall. Going across the year, how are we progressing toward proficiency based on our screener measures across the year? The major screeners that we have in place would be the AmesWeb Plus, which we set in place last year for our foundational literacy, our youngest grades, 4K through grade three. They are quick assessments, one-on-one. Teachers do them with students. Or sometimes in grades two and three, there would be kind of like a group setting where students are doing them all at once. About 15 minutes per student on average would be about what a AmesWeb screener would take. And then the other screeners that we have in place in grades four through 10 generally would be the STAR screeners. And there's an ELA version and a math version and accompanying Spanish versions for each of those subject areas. It's a computer-based test. It's adaptive, which is how we know where students will come out ready for instruction in approximately 30, 35 minutes, given in a class period to the entire class at once.
I'm going to take it from here for the next couple of slides. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our initial findings from the Fall Administration. First, I'll speak to AmesWeb Plus. When providing this initial screening for AmesWeb, ah, I can't talk, I'm sorry. AmesWeb Plus, the English measures were at 74.6%. Our students were above the 25th percentile. And then on our Spanish measures, we had 74.4% of our students that scored above the 25th percentile. And then when we're talking about STAR, we saw 62.7% of our students that scored above the 25th. And then when we're talking about STAR, we saw 62.7% of our students that scored above the 25th percentile on the reading measure, and then 60.8% of our students that were above the 25th percentile on the STAR math. And I will also speak to why we focus in on students above the 25th and why we're focusing so heavy on that 25th percentile. When we look at and analyze data on a use of universal screener, we want to use the 25th percentile because that allows us to consider students that may need additional supports in those different areas. So what we would do is we would provide additional diagnostic assessments or testing to really hone in on the skills that students may need more supports with. And that's, that 25th percentile gives us that quick indicator of students that may need that additional testing and additional support. So looking deeper into Ames Web Plus, this screen shows data across our grades now. So now you're looking at the K through three and the different percentages that were above the 25th percentile on the fall screener for the English, early literacy screener, and then for the Spanish, early literacy screener.
I want to just extend a little bit on the notion of the 25th percentile that Ms. Creewalt shared. The board will remember, last year, we talked about Act 20 and the series of assessments that ultimately resulted in a student having an individualized reading plan created for them. When we look at the K123 data here from Ames Web for this fall, that is the number that we would look to then to create those individualized plans. And I mentioned that because we had some discussion about that last year as the flow of the 4K through three reading sequence.
I don't want to jump ahead, but is there an explanation as to why there's not a grade three in the Spanish instrument?
So in grade three, the programming is such that English is the focus of their literacy goals. And the only students who were given the Spanish version were new to the country. And there were fewer than 20, so we redacted that because it's identical. Turn that back on. All right, so here you have a quick look here at the STAR reading and lectura. So again, reading was the English measure, lectura was the Spanish measure given. Just as an overview for you all, in four through eight, we did have students take both tests typically so that we could track their bilingual literacy development. So you'll see high participation in both numbers there. Overall, screeners between the Ames Web and the STAR had very high participation across the district. And again, with a STAR screener, this is the first time we've given this in years and years in the district. So this year is sort of our baseline year where we're getting this look at, again, using that 25th percentile as our indicator. But now schools are looking at, what does that mean? Who's in that group and what supports might they need or what closer look really might they need? So that we know what kind of goals we could set for them in class. But this is just that, almost like that first net before they take a deeper look at the kids and how they're doing in class, because that's going to give them even better information for student goals. This would be our first look coming up at math on the next slide.
Can I ask a quick question? Did I hear you say correctly that for the last number of years, we haven't given the STARS exam? Is there any, I'm just curious why?
Sorry.
That's right, because I was in the district for a long time and for a lot of years, we were doing the STAR all the time. So I'm just curious to learn what that transition process was like.
Sure. Prior to my being in the role, I think around 2018, 19, the universal screeners had paused in lieu of development of interims. And we had curriculum-based interims, basically is what it was. And then we had a call from the field for some common data points that weren't specific just to a single grade level, but that went across grades. So we are back for ELA and math, doing these common screeners. So we have common data that can flow from an elementary to a middle to a high school level. Subject areas like social studies and science are still developing their curricular interims so that they have common data within their grade levels or within their subject areas to inform their next steps. But this gives us that common data point.
Can you explain why grades 10, 11, and 12 are lumped together?
So in grade, when we say the screeners are universally given through grades nine and 10, that's for the courses that are typically assigned to those grades in ELA and in math. So ELA 9, ELA 10 would have been given the screener. Now, there may be some students, very few in 11 or 12, who are rostered to an ELA 9 or 10 or for math, Algebra I or Geometry. So very few of those students were gathered into that grade levels, that grade levels data, because they may have been rostered to that to recover those credits. So they were also given the screener.
We have a student question.
So this is, Anna, she goes to East and she's a 10th grader who tried to take a test. And she said that she had trouble accessing it and that that was a big problem across a lot of students. Were you aware of that at all?
Yes, so with East, we did have some rostering issues initially with being on a different schedule. And I actually specifically know that you wouldn't have been in a course that needed to take that. That does, I did talk with Mr. LaCapton about it. But yes, I do know that that was an issue that we did get resolved by the end of the window. But you didn't need to because of where you're rostered. So if you were rostered, you're rostered to advanced courses and you are not in an ELA 10 or Geometry, so you are not part of the group that was screened. Yeah, great question.
She wants to take it.
Yeah, we had to fix the rostering issues and they caught who they could before the window closed. And then we were going to catch them in the winter window. So the next window is in December and we'll catch them at that point. Yeah, it's a great question. So again, this one is that big look, again, 25th percentile, first gathering of this data. So it just sets our baseline for where do we need to look in a little bit more closely within our universal setting to know who these students are? What do we do? What might they need next with them? What kind of conversations can we have with them? And actually, I'm going to let you go to the next one, because I think I'll have, yes, the key learnings. This is moral to speak about it. In setting up for the screeners, staff were trained for Ames Web Plus in combination with their literacy coaches and their principals. STAR screeners, they were trained, principals-led training that were provided by Renaissance, which is the STAR company. We had different accessible trainings that they had for both administration, for analyzing the data. We had student slideshows available to teachers to be able to introduce this to students. We had family letters go out via parent portal and school messenger. Or it's very, not parent portal, the pre-letter went out via school messenger, letting families know that this was coming. So one of our big learnings was how do I administer consistency of it and then the communication of it? The next thing that we're learning and that we're going with a lot, especially STAR, is what can this inform? You know, with Ames Web Plus, we know what it informs. It informs whether a student might need an extra academic plan, extra assessments, looking into them a little bit deeper. With STAR, it's our first year, we're learning which data points do we want to pull out of there? It's going to be percentile ranking, again, looking at that national norm. Are we performing as they would be expected? And are they growing across the year? So across the year, here we talk about the student growth percentile to watch, are they growing across the year? So developing the understanding of what to lift out of this, because there's a lot of potential data to look at within these. And then analyzing data is not new to our teachers, to our principals. But what do we do with this specific data? And how do we, between having different screeners, unify what we're looking at and how we might take that through a process to supporting students is something that we're working on moving forward.
Great, Anna.
Part of the next steps, and we'll go into a little bit of detail on that in a second, will involve having a reference point to share with you as we come back together again periodically throughout the year in terms of where our screener is pointing us toward in terms of thinking about how our students might do on other assessments. That's certainly not its sole purpose, but it is a reference point that we have now that we would have otherwise not had prior to this.
So in regard to some other implications for the installation of screeners, there are some budgetary implications as well as some scheduling considerations, some of which we've learned through the process that we've gone through this fall. Screeners are an ongoing monitoring of students. And so with that, each year, we do need to make sure that we are budgeting to be able to purchase those screeners as well as budgeting for any associated training that would be needed. Jess referenced some of those types of training sessions that teachers may need. Additionally, time is another factor in this. And it's not just the time that Jess mentioned, which is relatively short for students, but it's the time that teachers need to be able to have time to work through the analysis of the data that we have. And so some things that we want to consider as we move forward are thinking about when we're scheduling the assessments so that we're able to maybe schedule them in times where there would be a teacher workday that would follow closely after so that teachers would have extended time to be able to have those discussions to address all of the things that Jess has mentioned as well. And that leads us into our next steps. And a few of them were already discussed. But in summary, the universal screeners are an opportunity for us to be able to gain some insights on our students and to be able to enhance our conversations as we move forward. The action steps that we'll review throughout the year in the Academic Excellence area are really going to be enhanced by some of these conversations. So when we are having the scheduled check-ins with school leaders, being able to reference these data points as one of the data points that we can talk about regarding students, that's going to help us to be able to have better conversations around student achievement and academic excellence. In addition, when we're talking about a universal planning process, teachers coming together and having data to be able to make decisions on how to lesson plan and how to think about next steps for instruction. These are all things that will be able to be enhanced through the data that we're collecting. Again, it's one piece of the puzzle, but it's a piece that's important for us to get some foundational information and then build upon that throughout the year. So that is all that we have prepared for our talking points. Any other conversations or questions?
Questions, Lynn?
So tell me, if I'm understanding this, so your goal is that toward the end of the school year, when you test the students, you will have, we will have made perhaps 4% increase in how many are reaching the state, the level that the state sets. But today, now, early in the year, you're using this screener to identify those students who are most likely to need extra help to move in that direction. Is that correct? I'm sorry, but I just never worked with a universal screener before. I had to understand it. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about how the presentation of data was managed? At the beginning, we were giving a statistic of where we're performing against state average. And that percentage was delivered as an aggregate, right? Our district is, you know, at 38% or whatever that number was. Is it useful? Or I think it would be useful to me when you're presenting grade-level assessments and screener data, if it's available, and it may not be. So I acknowledge that, to see how at grade level, we're performing against state average as well, right? So is, and I don't know if we have to wait to scorecard or what. But when I look at this, and we had a conversation when we first saw this presentation about how am I to interpret this data? And what does it inform me of? And it's not a trend, and it's an early-year data point, no, be compared to another. But we're also wanting to see how we are trending towards our 2030 goals as well. And we all know that there's probably a blip in a couple of age groups due to COVID and quarantine that are making their way through the grades as we run. And I don't know if that's one of the reasons why we're not seeing this kind of a performance against state average at the grade level. But if that, when we come back in the end of the year, if it's feasible, I would appreciate that data.
Yeah, thank you for that. We will, when we share with you the growth measures in the second installation of this screener, share with you a look at the importance of using the 40th percentile as that predictor of proficiency on state exams. And so we'll have, we'll have one full cycle of the screener to show, and we'll disaggregate it that way.
So if I understand it correctly, this screener data, I can't compare it to where we're performing against state average because the report card is against last year and this is a snapshot this year. Is that right? Okay, thank you. I just had to work through that a little bit. I appreciate the time. Yeah, Sam.
I just have a question about thinking about next steps and how these ongoing data conversations are happening at the classroom level. And, you know, in your slides, you know, you referenced developing that common protocol, scheduling check-ins with school leaders, you know, that universal planning process. And I just would like to get your kind of take on where teacher voice enters that and seeing as how these are happening in individual teacher classrooms. And then the results of this information is being implemented in individual classrooms. Just understanding where, you know, teacher voice comes in in terms of the discussions around how data will be analyzed, used, and those broader conversations of engaging teachers and that.
Can I start with a couple of points on that and then pass it down the line? The very, the very fact that we have the STAR screeners and that we've brought back the STAR screeners has come heavily from voices from the field saying, we don't have something in common to operate from to begin those conversations, which I think also is a test to the 97-plus percent assessment rate with this. There was, there was a thirst for this information and came heavily from teachers, especially teachers whose role is defined by supporting students who are struggling the most in school. The other side of that is the importance of teacher voice in helping us work toward a more collaborative environment where teacher time is understood and respected to be preserved and protected for just these kinds of conversations. And I'm very thankful for the teachers who have been very active and engaged in some sessions that I've been working with to really help name and define what a day needs to look like for them in order to be able to have the time to be as committed to student learning that they want to be. And we've got to move some things out of the way so that that can happen.
Alex.
So if we are to consider this more or less a formative assessment, in part at least, and also assume that we have a goal to meet in five years and that this is at least one of those years where we need to be seeing progress, you know, we're going to get these data points a few times or so throughout the year. But what do we have in place right now that we are doing or will do to then take the formative data that we have and make the adjustments necessary to get the growth that we want? I mean, and what might you feel like we need as a district to make sure that we get that growth throughout, not only future years, but also this year? Because we can't obviously waste this year. So kind of operationally, making sure that we can do whatever we can to support actually putting work in to make that progress, not just spending time having the data, if that makes sense.
I'll just add one quick comment, also related to the question that you previously asked, which I think connects the question that Alex had as well. One, and it goes back to the data protocol and the teacher voice. And I think one of the pieces is developing that protocol so that we can use that in multiple areas throughout the field. And I think that we're starting with, we're developing that protocol based on some of the feedback that David referenced, but also calls that we've all received from teachers asking us, what do we do with this data now? People are eager to be able to use it. And so the teacher voice piece is, we've been very intentional over the past number of years to make sure that when we're trying things out, we're trying them in different spaces so that district leadership is having conversations. As soon as the data comes in, we're having conversations, talking to As soon as the data comes in, we're having conversations, talking about how will literacy coaches, how will math coaches help to support teachers and students? And then bringing teachers into those conversations, perhaps through department chairs. We have some structures set up now to be able to get teacher voice so that we can develop this protocol. Because I think the protocol is going to help us to be able to have a common way to talk about data so that, that we're not just looking at it as it's coming in, but that we're taking some action steps. And then we're going to add some.
I was just going to add that some, some of that happens through the, the PRP process with our literacy plans that we have for students that are working within that 25th percentile or lower. And we are continually looking at the data around those students and providing instruction that meets the needs of those students that directly relates to the specific skills that those students need. And the plan is outlined to focus in on those skills. And then the progress monitor tools that we have in place also measure that on a weekly basis so that we can see whether students are growing in response to the instructional strategies that we're providing. Or if they're not, then it being able to adjust that. And teachers now being able to use that tool from last, last the winter and then the, the last spring, they're more familiar with Ames Web and how to use that tool. So now they can align their instruction to the data that they're seeing around their students and really hone in on the skills that their students need help with.
Other questions? Well, thank you for the presentation tonight. And I think if I'm correct, we covered the board three, A, B, and C in that presentation. So appreciate it. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is 3D, which is the update on the safety and security measures. And just to set, we had the community roundtable. And during that time and beyond, we made a commitment to have this conversation tonight. And it will start with a presentation or that from, of that feedback by Superintendent Byer, so.
Thanks. And team members, if you want to come on up. What we're going to do is, as President Lyerly just mentioned, I will run through the feedback from the roundtable. And then the team will be here to respond to any questions that the board has during deliberations. All right. The agenda tonight for this part of the board meeting, we will review the tabletop discussions that happened at the roundtable event at Preble. We'll cover existing security measures, short and midterm action steps that occurred in the aftermath, a summary of recommendations from the community from the roundtable, and then set us up for discussion about next steps. So to begin, September 15th, we held the community roundtable presentation at Preble. The turnout was fantastic. And as I mentioned to the media earlier today, that didn't surprise me because this community really cares about our public schools and our students and our staff. So it was a wonderful turnout. And the goal there was to engage the community in some tabletop discussions. Specifically, we had three questions for the community. Question number one, share with others at your table, your feelings from last week's events and your response to the district's actions that followed. And what I'll share with the board are the themes that came out of each question. You can find more detail on our district website. If you just go GBAP's safety, it should take you to the website with the, the comments and any of the questions that came up from the roundtable along with answers. The themes that went along with the first question were communication concerns, concerns about safety and security measures, student behavior, discipline and accountability, emotional reactions and trauma, and need for mental health and relationship support. And then finally, desire for proactive, not reactive, planning. Question number two. Can you help me out? Thank you. The district has shared its safety protocols and took action last week to implement the change to the clear backpacks. Share with your table what other suggestions you have to improve school safety and the themes were, if you could, Kenzie. Enhanced physical security measures, stronger mental health and prevention supports, clear and consistent discipline and accountability, improved communication and transparency, structural and environmental changes. And finally, culture, relationships, and community partnerships. Question number three. What community resource, resources or strengths do you feel the district is not tapping into or should connect with more that would help improve school safety? And the themes were mental health and social emotional supports, youth mentoring and positive role models, parent and family engagement, community organizations and partnerships, cultural and community connections, and communication, coordination, and visibility of resources. There were some common themes across all three questions. Next slide, please. And if you could just go ahead and put them all up there, if you could, Kenzie. The last one will be background checks. What you see on this slide is a list of, it's not comprehensive, but it is a high-level list of our current existing security measures that we have in the district. And I wanted to pause here to see if, without getting into any great detail for security reasons, if the board has any questions or students have any questions about the list that is currently in place.
Please tell me what are universal components?
Yes, I can. I'm Christina Jingle. I serve in the role of Associate Director of People's Services. So I'm pleased that you asked that question because we actually employ a number of effective strategy, violence prevention strategies. And the tool I would love to call out is what one of our presenters talked about tonight, one of our speakers. He talked about trauma-sensitive schools. Over the course of last several years, we have trained all of our new educators in trauma-sensitive schools, which really teaches our educators about the impact of trauma on brain development, but really talks about the importance of relationship building as well and is that, as that applies to our learning setting. The other thing that we train all of our new educators on is restorative practices, is the other thing our presenter brought up tonight. And we really focus on inclusion circles within the classroom that really give our teachers a tool to create those safe caring communities within their classroom. So those are two of the high-leverage universal strategies we use.
Alex.
Do we have any checks or assessments currently in place to look at our schools in regards to ensuring that classrooms are locked during instruction? Are we assessing that at any point in the year, random checks, anything at any level? I was curious.
Well, we do the site security assessments, which is part of that. We also rely on our principals to reinforce that policy along with having them and their other administrators in the buildings doing some of that enforcement.
Other questions? Okay.
Thank you, Kenzie. If you could go to the next one. The short and midterm action steps that we took over the last couple of weeks, we increased adult presence, moved to clear backpacks, modified the discipline plan. That one was specific to unsafe behavior. We've developed and enhanced civic partnerships. We've initiated the school security assessments. We do that on an annual basis anyway, but Mr. Coller was able to speed those up a little bit. He's also in the process of developing the student safety committee, which he spoke to ICSC about last week. He's going to bring back the district safety committee. We're in the process of reviewing after-school activity safety protocols. So thank you to the community member that spoke during open forum regarding that. And then we are going to ask the board to approve a job description tonight that would allow us for additional safety and security positions specific to that. Next slide, please. The roundtable recommendations from the community were divided into two categories, physical security and then building supportive school communities. And under the physical security, it includes weapon detectors, metal detector wands, exterior door alarms, dress code or school uniforms, closed campus, increased SROs, and harsher discipline. And then under the building supportive school communities, the themes were build relationships with students and mental health services. Next slide, please. The next steps for the district include completing the school safety assessments, evaluating exterior door alarms. We will continue to explore increased mental health and student support, explore community volunteer and partnership opportunities. And as I mentioned just a little while ago, establishing the student safety committee, re-establishing the district safety committee, and evaluating the discipline changes that we made.
Yes.
Is there a reason that the district safety committee was not currently operating?
Yeah. COVID, it stopped and we never started it again. No. The next steps for the board, next slide, please, is to deliberate on the recommendations that came from the community. So we're asking the board for direction and next steps. And the team is here at the table again to respond to any questions that you might have about the options that were presented from the community.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Byer. Before we get started on our deliberation, we've seen this, we had access to it and it was posted. And I just want to make sure that if any board member has any part of this, they want to drill down into a little bit. You know, please, we can do that in advance. After which, my plan is to go through and, and as listed in the last section of the presentation and as we have in the memo, we're just going to step through each of the recommendations, including the, the evaluation of a new policy around backpacks and have a conversation. And at the end of each conversation, I want to record what the board's direction is and make sure. And it is not a, only adopt or reject. It's if we need additional information or if we think that there's a step in a process that we need to go through, let's record it. Let's make sure that the district walks away this evening with a clear understanding of what our expectations are for each one of these recommendations out there. Also, and we have a list of them that I'll be using. And I don't know if we want to put that on the, up on the screen, Kenzie. Do you have access to my spreadsheet? You probably do not. I'll share it with you. But I want to make sure that the board has an opportunity. If you don't see something on the list that you feel like the board has a say in and you want to make sure that it's in the context of security, it's relevant to speak to this evening, we'll take those at the end, all right? So I'm going to start back at the beginning. We just ended our presentation. Is there anything you want to ask of any of the district's resources we have just based on the presentation? Andrew.
Thank you. Not a, not a question, but I just want to point out something that's not really going to get much discussion later because it doesn't need to, because we're already doing it. I, I want to make sure that people understand that the, the, some of these things we're already doing. They aren't, they aren't exciting, they aren't big-ticket items. They don't attract a lot of attention. But the, the, the bottom line is the most, the most important thing that can, that can happen sometimes if a, if a threat actor is just bound and determined is, quite frankly, harm reduction. And our, that's where locked doors are extremely important. And I think we're, anecdotally, they seem to be, seemed to be a very high percentage locked, locked doors when I was going around visiting schools this year. That's just anecdotal. That's critical. The secure entrances are critical. Anything that would slow down someone and give authorities more time to respond. I don't want to get into extreme detail there, but tho- those are things that are known to be very important. What would slow down the progress of, of an incident? And so we are, you know, the, the fact that there's suggestions about new things after an incident, I didn't want that to, the, the momentum, the public momentum towards doing something, I want to make sure it doesn't neglect what we are already doing, which are some of the most important pieces that we've had and committed to and committed funds to with the, the secure entrances and so forth. So I just wanted to make sure that was out on the table before we start. That we're not, we're not starting from, we're doing, oh, oh, we're doing nothing. What are we going to add? We're doing quite a bit of important research-based stuff. Is there anything to add? I think is the better question.
Appreciate it, right? And that leaves, I have a question and I don't know, Mr. Coller, if you feel comfortable, but I know that we accelerated an external assessment. It is an annual assessment that we have done. To Andrew's point, this is not something that we, you know, we're not at the beginning. So just went through it and I know we're still in the process. Early observations, are we, are we as a board, should we expect anything to come out of this latest evaluation or, or assessment that we should include in a conversation?
To answer your question, having been through the four assessments that they did at the high schools, the things that, in my opinion, that they, and I obviously haven't seen the report. So things that were discussed at the table with the administrators after the assessments were done would be things that I would have probably had the same conversations about. Obviously reinforcing things like making sure in classroom doors are locked and closed, making sure that we've got on the proper safety information in our classroom evacuation routes posted. There were some new pieces to the assessment that were some different things that they were asking about that we hadn't really discussed in the past. So some signage around adding signs for letting people know that there was security cameras in use. I don't anticipate there being like a, a big gotcha kind of thing that's in there. I mean, I'm guessing that based on the, the feedback that I got from them and that they provided to the, the building administrators that we, we do things pretty well here. And overall, the compliance that we're asking from our buildings is, is done pretty well. Obviously, there's going to be things here and there that are missed or things that could be improved. But I don't think there was anything that was going to be so egregious that we would be shocked that it was not being done before or that we have some significant improvements to make. But having not seen the report, I don't.
Sure.
I can't speak for sure. But there, there'll probably be some things there for us to review and discuss, but I don't know exactly what quite yet.
Right. Appreciate that. Other questions or for the staff? Alex.
When I think about my many years in a lot of our schools and I think about communication with GBA over the years, including, you know, this year. And I think about all the community members I've talked to over the last couple of years. And then I think about the feedback that we've gotten recently, not only not only from speakers tonight, but also what we see in the roundtable feedback. There's a continued constant and large majority of people asking for us to be better when it comes to our behavior responses and our consequences implementing those systems. And that part's pretty clear. So, my question at this point is, what plans are in place, or are we considering putting in place to make changes to, to how we do with behavior?
We've, we've made that change to the way we are addressing the unsafe behavior by extending the consequence period of time. That would be, again, for the public, if you hadn't heard, after a suspension, student returns to school in the past, they would just return. Now, instead, minimally, there will be a week of supervision. There won't be unstructured time with an adult present. That means you're eating lunch, being supervised by an adult during passing time, you are with an adult. Start to school, end of school, you are with an adult. It includes parent conversations, so that we can help support the parent in digging into the root cause. Why is the unsafe behavior happening in the first place? And how can we support the parent in making sure this doesn't happen again? And the parent's also supporting us to help instill a mindset of being safe at school. So we're in the process of monitoring that. It's only been implemented now for, I think this will be the second week of implementation, so we will monitor that.
Can I, and maybe I should reframe my question better, so my apologies. What can it look like for us to go through a more wholesale revision of what we currently have in place in totality? You know, you, you gave a perfect example of something, you know, a small piece of how we can respond to something when they're, you know, and that's just one small piece of it, and it's also kind of on the backend. But if we were to go through what a lot of, again, I think a lot of people in the community in various different roles are asking for is, more or less, how can we go about taking a wholesale approach to analyzing, reviewing, and probably making some changes to a larger portion of, again, our behavior policies as a whole?
Are we, are we talking about making consequences stricter?
That is likely definitely a part of it, considering, again, the feedback, and I, I think the need. You know, for example, when sometimes we've had major incidences, there is, there's many times a lot of preceding incidents for the same student who would, you know, instigate a larger incident. And a lot of times, there are situations, at least that I have seen, where if we had taken a different approach earlier, and sometimes it might simply mean a stricter approach, might mean more consequences in earlier incidences, it might help deter and/or prevent or lead to a different outcome in future incidences, or prevent them, you know. So, again, because that is, that is along the lines of what a lot of people in different capacities and different aspects of our school district have asked for, how can we go about more of a wholesale revision process of our behavior approach?
Yeah, and you, you raise a good point. It's probably been, Melissa has a better memory than me, and I don't know if Christina was around when we did this. It's probably been at least five years since we've done a calibration with the Board of Education. And what I mean by that is, and I think Andrew is with us, we met down in the room on the first floor. We had the behavior team with us, and we presented to the Board of Education different circumstances that we deal with as a school district, different behaviors. And then we asked the board to have a discussion about, based on the policy, as, as it's written, what do you believe would be an appropriate consequence for this? And then, we as a team talked through, well, this is how we dealt with it. Does the board agree? If not, are there modifications to the policy that needs to take place? I think that's what you're describing.
Yeah, I think we have changes that we are being demanded to be made to our behavior policy and approaches. And I think we need to commute, what I'm asking is, what do we need to do to make that happen? Because I, I think, I think that's the request from teachers, from parents, from community, from the roundtable. And we need to start that process. And so I guess I'm asking, what do we need to do to go through that again? And at least go through the process of seeing what we need to update, if anything.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Do we have a partner in this? I mean, is this something that the district does in the calibration and in assessment? Or are there external partners, like a CISA or whatever, that we lean on to help inform that practice and their practices? Or is it just really an internal district's? Okay, thank you.
And for a little bit of additional clarification, so we kind of did the same thing roughly five years prior. So we kind of made a pretty significant change in implementation, and I believe it was 2015, we kind of introduced, well, a lot of people refer to as our MLSS. And that kind of came in and more or less replaced just the standard handbook language. I was the dean of students that year, and we didn't really have this process that we have more or less had for a while now. And, you know, so we, like she said, we kind of just decided to do those kinds of things. And at least, it's, it's been a while since we've really done anything different than what we've had in place structurally for a long time now.
Okay, so, I appreciate that. I'm going to pull us up out of this conversation, but I put it on the spreadsheet, because I do think what you're asking for is some follow-up conversations or follow-up action items. It will come back, and we'll address them. You want to turn off your mic? Thank you. And so we'll come back, and we'll wrap and make sure that I capture an action item there for you. All right. I had another question about the presentation, and that is, another theme across different questions was mental health services. And I left wondering, that's, that's a very large topic. And, and what would that look like if we made changes, or if we added different supports? What are we talking about there? Do we have any idea yet?
Yeah, that, that would be a difficult one. I didn't want to leave it off because it was unrealistic. I think it was important to have the discussion about it. But accessing mental health care right now in the state of Wisconsin is, I would say, at a crisis level. And I'm wondering if Christina, could you respond to that as well?
Yes, I can. As Vicky mentioned, we really understand the importance of our community partners to really address the mental health well-being of our students. So we've developed a number of strong relationships with providers. One of the things that we're offering is school-based mental health. And despite the shortage, we really remain committed to expanding school-based mental health services to really improve access of care for our students. So this year alone, we've onboarded five additional schools who now offer school-based mental health, culminating in a total of 22 of our schools who offer school-based mental health. And we're continuing to have conversations with partners to be able to offer this in all of our school buildings as one facet to ensure that our students have timely access to mental health services.
I, I do want to, because people might be listening to this and thinking I can access this tomorrow. That's not the reality. There is a capacity issue with the mental health providers. So we're talking about, if, if we're working in tiers, and tier one is the universal, these are tier four. When the scale is usually only tier three.
Yeah, thank you. Katie?
I know that last year, ICSC, we had an initiative to develop what we thought students thought the most accessible mental health counseling was. And we thought that that was an online service, and that that was something that we discussed being implemented in schools. And I'm just wondering if there was ever any progress on that.
I don't know about an online service, but I can tell you that we've created a process for teletherapy in schools. So essentially, if we have a student who already has a provider, but there's an issue of, again, access of getting to the provider during the school day, we now have a process where you can receive that service during the school day, right? In a confidential setting within the school.
Alex.
Along this same theme, you know, generally speaking, I think a lot of people would agree that focusing sometimes certain resources on our younger kids tends to have benefits in the long run to their, you know, to their outcomes. Is there any thought to, knowing that mental health services are extremely arguably inaccessible, to maybe reallocating or any thing that we can look at possibly doing to see if there's a different way we could utilize the personnel that we have to maybe get a better benefit, so to speak, than what we have now? Or at least something I'd like us to consider if we know we can't necessarily expand our capacity?
That's a great point. What we've done in the past is, we've actually used a needs assessment to identify schools that have some supports already in place. And then, we prioritize schools based on this assessment. And then that's how we determine where we allocate the resource. But it definitely, to your point, we could, we could relook at that.
Other questions? Samantha?
In a similar vein with kind of the ongoing development of mental health access, the other piece that came up that wasn't necessarily directly on us, but I think informs the rest of the conversation is, what does that ongoing building of community partnerships look like? And kind of what is the vision or direction of what that might be going forward? Because I think that hugely impacts some of these other options on the table for us.
Yeah, thank you for that question and observation. And much like Katie shared, that student initiative is really where we're looking next with community partnerships and volunteer commitments. I think we can reasonably think, as adults, we know what students would want and what would benefit them in the school setting. Every once in a while, it's good to actually check in on them and ask them that question. And so, over the next couple of months, we'll be fanning out and spending time in smaller groups of students, seeking large representative groups, and also very small focus groups of students to help us answer that question, to make sure that the partners we go out and leverage, the needs that we identify are, are, have a match with what our students are asking for. We're going to ask questions like, how comfortable are you if a stranger comes up to your lunch table and says, "How you doing today? And how are things, how are things going?" That might inform how we bring volunteers into the school setting. So really, directly to your question, those remain to be determined, because we, we certainly know what we have available. But I think the more effective routes will come through these conversations with students.
Jeanette?
And, and that's great. We're going to ask the students, as we should. But are we going to have roundtables like that with parents? Especially parents who feel like they're struggling. They, they want the best for their student, just like we do, and probably more than what we do. But they don't have the resources or the knowledge. What supports do we have for parents? And how are we getting information to know what they feel they need to support their family? Or is that even appropriate for?
Oh, sorry. We've attempted over the years, parent education opportunities. It's hit and miss for attendance. So, I, I don't know if Christina would disagree at this point, but there, there has to be a different venue. And we'd be interested in exploring what that might be. Christina?
Yes, one of the things, and I believe I spoke about it previously, was that we host what we call table talks. And it's really designed to have a conversation with our parents around mental health. And so we did that previously with our English-speaking families. This year, we're going to do it with our Spanish-speaking families. We rotate, we alternate years with that. We, we were able to facilitate that with our Spanish-speaking families a couple of years ago. And what we heard was that they found that it was so invaluable, but that we really needed to market it differently to our families. And so what we are doing right now is, we are reaching out to our community partners to get some feedback about that. How do we really market it to our families that they're aware about this opportunity? And then we hope that we'll increase attendance that way.
David, can I ask a question? There are a couple of items that we're going to talk about this evening, where I'm very interested in additional student engagement. And I know we just touched on it. Can I ask how we intend to engage students? And, you know, the reason being is, I know and I value and respect the ICSC's role in our district. But when we think about the roundtable, you know, we didn't say, hey, community leaders, come and tell us about, you know, and give us feedback. We said, "community." And so I'm trying to figure out, you know, is there a mechanism that we can reliably use over and over again systematically to get, you know, student data, our student feedback in a, in a way that's useful? I know the roundtable concept was fantastic, right? We had 500 people in a room, and I felt like we got unbiased, unfiltered information from a lot of people in a very organized way, all right? So when I think about getting information from students, I know that surveys is probably not going to be a great way to get information from students. So, you know, when we look at that, do you have any suggestions of how we would engage students across the schools?
I think you name a significant challenge and opportunity right there, to be able to do this in a way where each student feels heard, and each student feels approached in a way that's comfortable, should they want to engage. The, what I had just shared about some of the outreach that'll take place over the next month will be done with the leadership of Ms. Ingrid Parker-Hill and the Family Community Engagement Team. This is an area where they specialize their work. And so, that team will be putting together the outreach approach. I think I can safely say we're going to test a model with this. There's also an opportunity to re-embrace the original purpose of advisories in our high schools, and to really recognize those as smaller communities of students and teachers who have a strong bond, and are building up the relationships to be able to have these conversations in an ongoing way. So that'll definitely be a lever that we'll be looking to for this as well. But in terms of a kit right now, not yet to find.
Well, I'll, I'll just share with you a conversation that I had this weekend with another board member, and trying to, you know, noodle on this same problem. And I said, why aren't we kind of laying on top of advisory at points in time? A roundtable type of discussion, it's a small group. People would be able to give input and have it synthesized, collected, and potentially brought up through ICSC of our. But if we could say, hey, we need student engagement, and we all knew what that looked like and felt like in the understanding of how we would get that data, I think it would help us kind of understand how we move forward on a couple of these things. All right, any other questions? Lynn?
This is not related to student mental health or anything. This is a whole new thing, so is that okay? I think this probably would go to either Superintendent Byer or to, oh, I'm trying, I'm sorry. I'm trying to look at my phone, because some, one of our, our public school advocates in the community has asked me a question, and I would like to ask it of you folks. The question is, do we, as a school district, have enough personnel to meet the needs of children in a safety crisis?
Safety crisis. In a safety crisis? I would, if, if it were a crisis, I would say yes. We have incident command, and each school has a crisis team to respond. District office is prepared to, I don't want to get into too much detail, but to deploy as a large team as needed. I think where we wouldn't have the capacity is dealing in, God forbid, an aftermath, where we would need to rely on community support. I don't know if Chris and Christina might respond and David differently than that.
I would agree with what you said, that I feel like we would have resources on a district level to support a school in a crisis. Depending on what that crisis is and how large of a crisis it is, could cause us to have to get assistance from outside of what we have the ability to, to do, which is not unusual for other school districts as well.
I would expand it to, in a crisis, any school safety plan is going to need to outsource help from community partners, police department, fire department, et cetera. So that is part of the plan with that, so the resources during a crisis and after does have a high level of community partner participation.
Other questions? Other questions? Okay, I'm going to now walk us through the exact recommendations or what we heard from the community. And let's have just a very controlled conversation about them. And the objective is to identify what the board would like to see, what we want to direct the district in, in developing either responding to the, the recommendation or not. So I'm going to start with weapon detection, metal detection implementation. Uh, it was in the community feedback and it has been, um, said loud in many different venues. I've heard from individuals from the community as well. So I'll start there and I'll open it up to the board. And if we want to go around the table, just to kind of organize the conversation. Alex, I can start with you. And if you want to establish your position on them and if you have a request for additional action, um, let's, let's, let's start the conversation.
Sure. So my initial thoughts are, um, you know, I've gotten a lot of feedback from this over the last month from a lot of community members who have reached out. And, you know, a certain amount, I would say, and including the roundtable feedback, you know, there has been enough voices that people would like to see a weapons detection system. Which kind has been kind of all over. But then, you know, when I continue to read a lot of research that I find on my own, research has been provided, not only from maybe people in the district, but also other people who either have been in education or community members who are versed in some of these systems through their jobs. You know, I, I'm conflicted because the research out there is not really very strong. And that's probably the simplest, best way to put it, that there is really a meaningful impact, especially when you look long term. And again, as I said to a lot of community members, I'm never interested in doing something just to do something. It's not how I operate. I always want to do something that's going to be effective and helpful and hopefully in perpetuity. So, you know, I, I'll just simply put my stance that I hear everybody, especially those who've reached out in favor of them. But the evidence of them being effective, especially considering what it would take to implement them from a taxpayer perspective, from a, from a teacher and a school and a personnel perspective. It, it makes it hard to, to have a strong desire to, to go that route at this point.
So I'm going to just, I'm going to put you on record, right? Do you want the district to take any additional action on this? Or are you okay saying, let's move on and let's look at more appropriate control at this point and put this, you know, and defer?
I, I would, uh, I'm not sure I know exactly how to answer that, right? I would say to some extent, I would defer as I, I would prioritize other things that I want to see us maybe get right and get going short and long term before this would supersede that.
Yeah, yeah, turn off your mic. This is getting strange feedback. And I appreciate that you use the appropriate term. I didn't, defer is the wrong term, but prioritize, this is not your top priority. Is that fair to say? Jeanette?
I agree a lot with what Alex just said. There is research that shows that this does keep weapons out of the school, but it doesn't necessarily help with violence that occurs in the school. And we have devices that can create weapons, guns that can be made that cannot be detected. So I guess there's better equipment out there than just metal detectors. But the big thing is there was somebody who spoke this evening and said, do we really want our children to have to go to school where they feel like they're closed in? They're protected and that, that, is that the image we want to give to our schools? I have a little problem with that. And, um, but I think that the district should be looking at what the cost is, what the implementation is. It is a way to keep weapons out of the school. It's not a way to keep weapons out of the playground or as kids are walking home from school. Because oftentimes that's when kids don't bring the gun into school then because they know they're going to get caught with it. They leave it in the bushes outside and wait for the, and, and I know that that has happened because my daughter was a teacher in the inner city of Chicago. And that's what happened several times in her, um, to her class, to some of, some of her students, not all at once. So we, we need to protect our kids in school, but I think there's other ways, other priorities, maybe door alarms. And we're also doing some things now that are, are good, but we can get better. I agree, this is not a priority for me, but I think the district needs to look at it. I think the district needs to look at the cost and the feasibility and then have further discussion.
Thank you. Samantha?
Um, I would echo kind of what's been said already. Ultimately, you know, I really look at the research that comes out in terms of creating a welcoming space and the, the National Association of School Psychologists. This, I mean, there's really, there's really nothing, again, it prevents weapons. It doesn't address the root causes of conflict, violence, victimization in the schools. And I also think that having something like this in place would potentially allow us to become complacent in our other safety efforts because we have a very visible detection system that then we can check a box. Not that that's how any of this would operate, but okay, we have weapons detection. I think that that would potentially allow folks to have a false sense of safety. And again, because it's not addressing really the root causes of violence or victimization in schools. I, I can't hugely prioritize this. I think that I, I agree with Jeanette in that saying, I think it should potentially be something that we look more deeply into from a cost perspective and potentially explore a pilot with some very clearly defined criteria to see what that effectiveness would or would not look like. But in terms of just, you know, kind of wholesale saying, yes, let's go for it in all of our secondary schools. I, I don't think that that's the strong priority for me right now.
Lynn?
I would separate the efficacy of the, of the action from the cost and all of the other things. Of everything on this list, the only way you can detect a weapon and prevent someone from bringing it into a building would be this one. I remember the olden days when you could get on an airplane without going through a metal detector. You could walk right up to the airplane door and hug somebody coming off the airplane. Things changed and there was a reason for that. I would say that when you live in a country that has 330 million people, but 500 million guns, you have to face reality. I agree a hundred percent. This does not make a welcoming atmosphere. It doesn't address anger and, and students who feel like they are not connected with anyone and they act out for that reason. The only thing it would do is keep guns out of school. But when your country has 4% of the world's population and 46% of the world's guns and those guns are owned by half of the population, you have to do hard things like this. So I would definitely look into it. I'd hate to have to do it, but it might save lives.
Andrew?
Thank you. I'm ultimately my, one of my issues with this is the, the, the false sense of security that it, it creates. Because it doesn't, it doesn't stop. It stops one particular, one particular kind of attack, which would be someone attempting to smuggle a weapon undetected into a school and then to use the, the weapon. We've seen tragically that sometimes that's what happened, but there have been plenty of, plenty of times where there have been horrific casualties where the, the metal detector would have had nothing to do with it. Um, and not, that's not even, unfortunately, that's not even new. It was, um, one of our articles we had here referenced the, the, the Red Lake incident, a school district that was a, a very early adopter of, of metal detectors. And what, um, what happened was the assailant took the lives of the people in charge of the metal detectors and proceeded in. And that's the type of situation where what we do as far as, you know, what are we doing as far as making access within a, a building difficult, slowing down, giving authorities more time to respond? So that's just on efficacy bef, before we get into the environmental piece, which I, I think is, is important and valid. But if this, if the, if there was, if there was some, some kind of a thing that would prevent any incident from happening, happening at or, at or around a school, it would go far beyond, far beyond what, what this, this would be. And I just don't know that someone who is considering, um, considering such an act would, I, I, I could see someone just retooling to what, you know, what does work. There's also possibilities that if there's a, any backed up line, if people are out, if there's a machine defect and there's a, a backup out the door, that, that could be a critical problem as well. So, um, I'm not, I would never say, don't get information. Maybe there's, uh, I know we had one proposal from someplace that suggests a very unintrusive type of monitor that might even be portable. That could be a special circumstances, increased, you know, if there's increased security that needs to happen somewhere. And it's a, a device that can detect where there might need to be a second look without having to make lanes and, and so forth. But I would see that more as a, more as a situational thing, probably. I guess just, and if the, you know, if we had, you know, if, if we had a wide, a wide body of research that this is effectively stopping all these different mechanisms by which harm could come in a school, I would be much more, you know, I would be much more interested. But then, you know, also these, you know, fail rates of detection are, are high too. So, um, I would be, I would be interested in maybe some of that more limited information about situational or, or a portable system than a universal system.
Right. Thank you, Andrew. So, uh, will you turn off your mic because we're getting feedback? Appreciate it. Uh, hearing everybody, uh, I'm on, um, I find myself in a minority, I think. And that's, I have a background in information security and I don't offer that as evidence that I know what I'm talking about. I offer it as a, when you deal information security, there are like 12 domains of activities, right? That set out and establish a comprehensive security plan. And I hear, and it is correct, that a, a weapons detection system will not in and into itself stop and, and create safety. But when I look through and establish security plans, I don't also say, I'm not going to do this because it in and to itself will not create safety. I want to do all of them, right? And when I think about mental health services, when I think about behaviors and changing on that, yeah, that addresses the root cause and, and we make efforts there. But we also make sure that weapons don't enter the school and, and that contraband doesn't enter the school. And I see clear backpacks, popular or not popular, as a way to enable our student body to see something, say something. And it's part of a whole, um, and a comprehensive plan. So we have a mechanism as an organization to define, get more information and, and study this. So I would suggest and I'd hope that the board would, um, allow the district to go through an RFP process. I, I want to formalize it. I want to have the district put together what the requirements are, do the work. Put it out there, get information, um, from, uh, from reputable vendors. And then I want as part of an evaluation of finalists, um, to have them agree to a pilot program. You know, of a certain amount of duration so that we can put one or competitively put multiple vendors in schools so that we can get information. Because I agree that the research is soft, right? As to the efficacy across everything, right? Backpacks, there's not really good evidence there. It's not good evidence because we are judged by our failures, not by our successes, right? Um, and so I, I think that I don't know if it will be acceptable to students and if it will change the environment. Because our students walk into Six Flags and they walk through lanes and they enjoy themselves. Every time they go to a department store, they walk through something that detects if they're stealing something. I think this is not the, the same argument in the nineties and the eighties and when I went to school where it was an indication of an inner city school and had a negative connotation. So I, I don't see it the same way. But I also am not going to throw a significant amount of money on something that hasn't gone through a vetting process and that we are doing our due diligence and we as an organization have the ability to not only judge whether it will work in our organization, whether we can staff it and fund it, but that the students have a say, the administration and the, the teachers have a say about the efficacy and how it's done at, um, implemented in the schools. Uh, someone that spoke tonight also said, hey, what about football games, right? And what about other events and metal detection? These systems are portable and they can be put in. And now the kids from Bayport and the kids from other school districts have to abide by the same security protocols that we put on everyone that are entering the stadiums and everything. Because we're not going to enforce a backpack policy to that, that kind of event. But metal detection and weapon detection is, is a, I, I would have to reconcile not doing that against why the NFL doesn't, it does it and stuff like that. So I, I, I would hope that, that we go through at least an RFP process and get to a point where we have the data and to evaluate yea or nay. Andrew?
So if we have, um, if we have pilot programs and trials, that is, that is a, a, a backdoor. I'll, I'll say it now and you can, you can tell me, if you do it, you can tell me I'm wrong years, years from now when I, I'm off the board, but I've, I've said before that I'd be off the board sometime. But, um, I think that, um, it just tends to just keep happening. So I, um, anyways, the, um, so here's my concern with that. If we, if the steps go all the way towards trialing it. So a couple of things. First of all, um, we'll never, we'll never know what it, what it stopped, right? Pro, probably, hopefully it stopped nothing because we would have gone from no one intending to bring a weapon in, in the school anymore to nobody presenting a weapon at the mall. I mean, that would be ideal, but we would never know the answer to that question. The damage that is done, the damage that's done to the, to the environment and the, the climate of fear it creates is, is subtle. It's, it won't be noticed at, at first. It is a very subtle damage to the sense of community. And I And I, I think the, I think it's very likely that um, staff and students will say seems, seems fine because I, I don't think that they would truly believe. N- number one, I don't think they would truly believe if they didn't think it was fine that it would, would matter. I, I think we have a lot of, a lot of input that we get people, not because of what I think anyone here does, but because of a history in this district, uh, don't speak their minds. Uh, I hear, I, staff, uh, staff still tells me that they, they fear retaliation from things that have happened in, in the past prior to this administration, but it takes a, takes a long time. I think if you do, if your information gathering includes putting in pilot programs, you will never be able to not permit, make one or more of them permanent. And so I think, I think there needs to be a board vote before we're doing live testing. Um, and again, there, there might be some limited, you know, a portable type of system or a, you know, truly unintrusive, I would maybe think about. But I guess I would like to know, if we're going to do an RFP, I'd like to have a separate discussion of what we're going to allow to be live tested because that, that in itself changes the character of what we're doing. I wouldn't automatically say no to an MRFP.
Okay. Alex.
I had a couple of questions. Um, when it says approximately potential annual investment of 1.5 million dollars, now is that calculating only for, for high schools?
No, that'd be for all facilities with six through 12.
And the other question is just to make sure that I'm clear in understanding um, the staffing part. Um, if we were to do something like this, who is it staffed by separate individual people? Are we going to be having our own school staff trained to then be part of their duties or what does that actually look like?
So in, in the high level estimates that we included in the memo, that was just establishing what the vendors had kind of noted as potential staffing um, needs for um, for each lane. Um, so we did not determine whether that was school staff, if we were adding staff or if we were outsourcing. We put a dollar value, I believe like $30 an hour with an estimated hours for the estimated amount of lanes to give you the board a, a high level, um, kind of our risk factor of annual staffing of these uh, devices.
And last question, um, you know, when I think about potential efficacy and how weapons get into our schools and possibly deterrent it, we've already have as many schools do, um, whether the community realizes or not. There are instances where weapons get into our schools through a lot of our other doors where I'm assuming metal detectors will not be. So my, essentially my question is, we would only put these at our secure front entrances, correct? Or where would we employ these?
So we received information quotes um, from multiple vendors. Um, and again, high level feedback without site assessments, as it's noted um, in the memo. Um, the majority of them stated there is typically multiple entrances based on site assessment, size of school, um, student population. Um, so in these high level estimates, we did include multiple entrances, especially at our larger schools and multiple lanes, um, to make sure that, that we um, don't impact the school day.
And is it safe to say we're probably talking a few, three, four, five, some type number like that as far as how many different entrances we would have them at?
Um, at high school, middle school, we assumed uh, two entry points um, with a varying amount of lanes at each one. And then some of our smaller um, facilities. Um, and although Minoka, NEW, looking at one entrance where we can manage a, a smaller student population. Again, high level estimates, these are just from conversations with vendors, but they would want to do a site assessment to get the number of lanes and entrances. But that was the number used for these estimates, which we felt comfortable um, putting out there.
Lynn.
We will never know unless we try it. I support the RFP.
So I, I suggest an RFP because of Mr. Becker's concerns, right? Because when we go to an RFP and at this, this monetary outlay, the board is involved. Just like when we were looking at um, you know, getting help with the superintendent search. We all had input, uh, we all were part of an evaluation of a finalist. So there is not, th- this is the opportunity to do this in the most transparent way um, possible, right? And I absolutely disagree with uh, momentum in an RFP. Um, if we have the discipline that an RFP suggests, you can get right up to before signing a contract and saying, I'm, uh, no, we have changed direction. We do not have to do this. I agree with Lynn. Until we see something um, a- a- and we are able to collect it. And the research that I did, there are absolutely data points that we can use to evaluate that system in our environment. Um, incorrect detection statistics and things like that throughput uh, a- and to see how it would be uh, uh, implemented. And I agree, it doesn't cover all doors, but we already try to force entry through a minimal number of doors in the, in the morning. Um, and it's not intended to be something that covers all, all doors, right? It is a part of a security plan. So is, do we have consensus just to, to do the, do the work, get a um, enough, enough information? Or is there still discussion? Andrew.
I, I support, I support an RFP, but if an RFP presupposes live trials, then I don't. Because I think we need a separate vote on what, what we would be live trialing and, and how much of it would we be live, live trying? Because I do think that opens a door that probably can't be, maybe there's some types of systems we're okay with live trialing that we think are less intrusive and some that were not.
So yeah, when I think of a, a pilot program, I would, I would want to, we would need to be transparent that anyone that went through the work of responding to an RFP knew that they were going to be asked to put equipment onsite for four weeks or whatever to do field tests uh, and, and everything. So the nature of that test, um, yeah, I don't see any reason why we would not have input with security to make sure that it was right sized and would answer the questions we wanted answers to. Um, but I would never want to have responses and then say, okay, as part of the finalist presentation, we have, we're going to uh, trial and, and have the two vendors provide equipment to us and, and set up, set up lanes at some um, pilot programs. So.
I'm, I'm going to try and explain it.
So an RFP, you have people respond and then you have, you, we would decide who the finalists are. So we get down to two vendors. Um, in order to determine A, if those vendors can actually deliver equipment that will meet the, the requirements and lives up to their marketing and sales presentation, we would want to have them commit to providing us a lane that we would put at pilot schools or pilot facilities so that students and staff could exercise and, and we could create tests so that they can go through them so that we could determine detection rates and efficacy and determine if finalist A is better than finalist B and do the math.
Okay, but it's, it's a, see now when you're talking about two finalists that are going to bring in their stuff and demo it, the, this is how, this is how things get subtly engineered here is that not because two finalists don't do it or let's focus our resources somewhere else, won't be a finalist, right? Now, now there, when you see two things, all the attention focuses there on an either or choice of two or of three. And I think this should, I think this should six pass or fail up or down, not through, oh, well, you know, we had table talk and the table talk was kind of leaning one way, but now there's two finalists, we got to pick one.
I, I disagree with you, but um, Lynn.
I, I have, I, I understand your concern, Andrew, but I do believe that we can go through the entire process that James has laid out and we can say, no, we have now found out, we don't want metal detectors in our schools. No, we're not going to do it. I'm confident in that. I know I can make that decision. I think the board can.
Jeanette.
Yes, I agree. I don't like the idea of metal detectors, but if we don't know what we don't know right now, we have to find that out before we can make a really good decision. At today, I don't know a whole lot of things. And if we were voting today on metal detectors, I probably would vote it down because I don't have enough information. So I would, I would support an RFP.
That Alex.
Just to make sure I can possibly tie something and also make sure I understand you correctly. Are you saying that possibly before we even do an RFP, that you want us to go through a process aboard of basically determining what our pest looks like? To know, you know, then when we do choose someone, if we were to, that we had already determined what a pass fail example would look like?
No, I just meant that I, I would want the ability to say, you know, maybe, maybe the, the top scores are, you know, a portable system and then something that I, that some might think is very intrusive. And a third one that's some sort of a middle ground. And maybe, I, I think the board needs to decide because even the testing of, of something makes, makes some impact. And maybe the board would not want to, I don't want the scores, the, the cut scores on a rubric to guarantee two or three vendors to test whatever they happen to, to test. I think the board, I think the board needs to make a decision about what's going to be live tested after reviewing the RFPs that come in.
Uh, totally makes sense. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, I, I'm going to pull us out of this. I'll record the um, the direction. Uh, let's move on uh, to backpack locker uh, policy. So um, we have a recommended policy adoption for um, a change to our um, a, a policy, a backpack policy. So Alex, I think that you were instrumental in putting this together. So I'll let you walk us through um, the, the policy and then we'll open it for discussion.
Sure, thank you. Um, so obviously I shared um, the, the memo and the student backpack um, policy proposal um, with everybody. And ultimately, again, this is one of a number of comprehensive things we can do um, to improve safety. And this is kind of tied in with a number of things that we currently do. Um, and a lot of it is based on preventing like weapons detection systems to a certain extent, preventing the availability or access to weapons or reducing it. Um, so what you'll see in this policy is to essentially consider codifying something that, as we've noted, a lot of other schools do, our own middle schools all this year do, which is maintain backpacks in the, um, in their lockers throughout the course of the day. Um, you know, one of the things that we know from our current example and other past shootings is, y- you know, the ability to have large weapons and larger amounts of ammunition and have access to them, especially with a large amount of people in a small confined space is what often can lead to exacerbated tragedies, more loss of life, more injuries and so on. Um, you know, and pairing this with our entry and exit procedures in and out of classrooms that we already have that are still relatively new um, to our monitoring procedures and our pat hall pass system that changes and limits and allows us oversight to who's in the hallways. In addition to the locked door um, aspect of our classrooms during the school day, this is an opportunity to, to remove possibly larger weapons and large amounts of ammunition out of the classroom. And with those other things, put multiple layers in, in the pa- i- in the way of someone who would want to gain access to a weapon throughout the course of the school day while in school, especially in a classroom. As a simple, as a little bit of a side note, um, feedback from multiple different, three different middle schools and a handful of different teachers. This also goes hand in hand with a lot of other things that improve the classroom environment, including behavior related things by helping reduce the amount of cell phones and other items that are in the classrooms that lead to other altercations and uh, relationship issues and, and hugs and pulls between teachers and so on. So with this backpack policy, the basic concept is that they were to be required in the high schools now to do what our middle schools do, which is to keep them in their lockers throughout the course of the day. Once they arrive to school, they stay there till they're ready to leave school. I guess at this point I'll take any questions, any thoughts, um, any clarifications and so on.
Yeah, open it for questions. Lynn.
So you say that um, the backpack would go into the locker when they arrive and it would stay in the locker until they leave. Does that mean the students don't have access to their locker during the day?
No, not at all. Students um, would routinely go back to their lockers as they do right now, as middle school students do and other schools, students do. You know, they would still be able to go to their locker and access their backpack um, throughout the course of the day as needed.
Jeanette.
Well, we heard earlier um, in community comment that sometimes the locker is very inconveniently out of the way. And going to the locker and then trying to get back to class can be a problem. I'm not in the school. I don't know if that is truthful. I'm assuming it is because this person said it was. So I would like somebody to tell me, is this a feasible thing? Could a student who has a class on the second floor, but their locker is uh, at the other end of the building on the first floor, could they be able to get to that locker, retrieve the things that they want for their class and get back up to the second floor to um, get to class on time?
Yeah, I can answer that from a number of different perspectives and thank you for that question because that's something that naturally is one of the first concerns. Um, so the first thing I'll say is West DePere, DePere, Pulaski, et cetera. There are tons of schools all around us that are just as big or bigger than ours um, that, that do this and, and their kids can make it work. Um, including a lot of us at different times when we were in school, operated and were able to do it. Um, so it's definitely manageable. Are there instances where there are kids that have a unique circumstance at some part in their schedule where it's a challenge? Of course. And between proper planning and some di- different options, we can definitely attend to those needs. For example, one of the things I've, I've mentioned is in a number of our schools right now, most of our secondary schools, um, all but probably one, we have significant reductions in um, in our enrollment compared to previous years where there are a lot more options for different locker placements that didn't used to exist. It's much easier and there's other things we can do to help those um, those tough circumstances. And, and that's just one example of things that we can do. Um, you know, as a dean of students, one year, for example, we only had three minutes of passing time at Washington. And when I was tasked to deal with Hardee's and, and whatnot, I, I did that exact test. I walked from the furthest corner on first floor and the northwest corner all the way to the other one. And I had to hustle like you couldn't believe just to make it in that three minutes with the locker stop. And it was really hard. So that reality can exist, but there are many of different things that we can do to address, address that need.
Um, and I don't know if all the, the building administrator's not here, but i- it's, I, we turn off. Is there a way to turn it down? It's not. No, I, I have the mastermind stays on and so, um, it isn't turning yourself. That's what I'm saying. Okay, so um, I recognize that other, um, other school districts do this. My, my son goes to a school district that um, does this. Um, in all of our high schools, is it guaranteed that everyone has a locker? Or is it an option at the beginning, oh, as we go in to uh, be assigned a locker? Or does everyone have a locker? It's an option? Okay, so I, I only, I bring that up because i- if, if we go down this path, well, then we have to, there's work, right? To, to make sure that um, that's there. Uh, I think a, a student um, spoke this um, evening and the question of whether it's feasible to walk from point A to point B, if um, you know, that's testable. And I would love for student engagement and student of input. Um, because feasibility and inconvenience and uh, the, if, if we're going to say walking through a, a a weapon detection aisle, um, does something to the environment of the school building, you know, forcing um, backpacks in lockers, we still have to at least, you know, uh, tend to. We still have to at least, you know, uh, tend to what that does to the environment of the school building as as well. But ultimately, the the question put was, are they large enough for a potentially a um, a backpack? And we're also gonna talk about dress code, which one of the things is big winter coat. Right? And where do you put that as well? So I hear and I see the the policy. Uh, I think I'm on the, is it feasible? From different um, perspectives as well, just and and what do we do to get answers to those questions? Andrew.
So it's, so it's it's not a, I I mean, it's it's not a scientific sample, but I asked my own kids who were there recently enough. And both of, uh, both of them from from West High said um, were just shocked that it was even being considered. Like how how could, not from a, we, I wouldn't like it from a, how could it, how could it possibly work? Now I have a, I have a great deal of respect if um, Alex has lived it and and done it in in buildings, then I'm certainly there might be something that you know, my kid's saying it's impossible. Maybe they weren't thinking of something, right? Um, they're not, I've I've heard it other places too. Um, I'm gonna say too that I'm I'm disappointed that with a whole lot of work uh, that has been iterated over years to make the student board voice a a good option, including being allowed to send any of your twenty plus members. Uh, being able to have two at the table in case one has to leave, can't come or aren't comfortable talking. Um, I wish I could ask, I wish I could ask students that question right now. I'm gonna, and I, there, I've said it. So uh, that being said, I think I would have to learn more. I mean, I, there has to be, I think, I think my, you know, I think my sons who recently went to West in in their mind are right that what they think of as this no backpack policy is impossible. I also think Alex is probably talking about something that's possible and maybe, but I will say this though. Uh, if if there is some kind of situation of, as soon as we get into having to ask, now we're talking about people with with confidence or parents who know how to navigate systems or or privileged. Like if you have to ask to move your locker, if you have to ask to have a second locker, you know, at West, someone could have a second locker if you had a weird cluster of classes very easily. But I don't know that people will ask. And I I don't know what will change the the culture of not asking. Um, that would be, you know, that would be my concern. I certainly don't, I I I think yeah, I would, I would just have to see how it, how it would would work.
So a couple of thoughts on that and I know there's really no good way to say this and I also mean a lot of what I say when I say this, which is you know, student voice is extremely valuable. Um, but at the same time, we also have to understand that it's a double edged sword too. And if millions of students across our country can do what I'm asking, what I think we should employ, including students in our own district that are younger than our high schoolers. And all of these other things, I think there's no reason why are all of our high school students can't, couldn't do this from a feasibility standpoint. And nothing has changed in society from what goes into our lockers than what it did at any point in the past. Coats and backpacks and extra stuff can fit. When I was at Edison, we used to have to share a locker before Red Smith was built and it worked. With winter coats, with backpacks. So I'm gonna be very direct. It is completely feasible. And of course, there's going to be some students that will not like it, but just like many things as kids, as people that we ultimately decide is in everyone's best interest, they they are also very capable. They can do these things. They are more than capable of figuring out the best way to time up when to stock them, stop in my locker, you know, what to put where, when to bring where and all of that stuff. We need to also give them credit, even if they don't like the idea of something for other reasons and and validate how they might not like something. We know that they, I know that they can do it. And I don't think that should be where the question lies as far as whether it's feasible. Um, I think ultimately the decision should be based on the merit of whether collaboratively, we think it has a meaningful enough positive benefit to improving safety and the classroom environment. And that's where the decision I think should ultimately lie. And the other part to add in for feedback on here is there's a lot of community feedback on both sides of clear backpacks. This policy also has the opportunity to make a decision on that. It kind of requires a decision to be made on that too. I envision, and this is my personal opinion, that students would be able to use the backpacks of their choice. And that might also change a lot of students and families and other people's perspective on supporting something like this if they were to be able to do that. Yet it still had to stay in their locker. So us deciding whether or not, or at least considering whether or not they're allowed to have clear backpacks or their own, that is not clear, is another part of this defector.
Samantha.
Um, yeah, I just had a few questions here. Um, from a facility standpoint, is there a guarantee that we have one to one lockers for each of our secondary buildings for each student enrolled?
We would have to get that information for you and confirm that.
Um, my other question is um, currently, and I know it was brought up, the lockers are an option. Part of that is there's a cost for a lock. So my question would be then if this is something that goes forward, is that a cost that would get absorbed into student fees? Is this a cost that gets added on? Is this a cost that goes away? Um, I I know it's a minimal cost, but it's still a cost. Um, and with that, would there then be a requirement that each student is issued a locker? And beyond that, I know just again, speaking from personal experience with my own children, the understanding at middle school when the backpack is in the locker is that they're able to carry a very large trapper keeper zipper monster binder thing that quite honestly, if the argument is school safety here, a handgun and a number of clips could be in that easily. So I don't think it, it, it doesn't solve the safety issue for me on that if those items are going to be continued to be carried.
And the one thing I would say is that's where when we talk about the definitions of backpack and bags, we would have to look at you know, the wording in the policy and what things are considered. And that is something that um, other teachers have brought up to me and where quite frankly, you know, we'd have to consider and make a decision on too. Um, you know, and it it's kind of similar to allowing, you know, the smaller pouches for personal items, you know, and and that that one not being clear with what we currently have. Um, you know, so it's definitely something we we'd have to attend to, but like we can do.
So you've uh, you've made the presentation of the policy. Jeanette, um, do you have questions, concerns? Do you want any additional information um, that would drive you to a decision?
Um, just as Sam said, I'd wanna know, is there a locker available for every student? And um, what would be the cost to the student? Would that it get absorbed in fees? Would that be? You know, if we have a student who can't pay their fees, that gets forgiven, um, what would be that? But most importantly, would ever kid get a locker and could it be flexible if all their classes were on the second floor and the locker was on the first floor? Could it get moved up to the second floor? Those kinds of things.
Okay, thank you. You have any other comments? Okay, Lynn?
I don't have any questions. I would just say, if I bring a gun to school in my backpack, it doesn't matter if I bring it into the classroom or leave it in my locker. I can go to my locker and if I bring a gun to school and I have a plan to use it, I'm going to use it wherever I can access it. I don't think this solves the problem of gun safety.
James, I'd like to just respond to that. So the intent of this is um, a little bit nuanced. So I just wanna make sure everybody gets to hear this. So for decades, the um, safety procedures we had in place in our school district up until Alice came along um, a little more than ten years ago, was strictly locked down, variations of lockdown within our room. And the whole premise from switching to locking ourselves into the room was very specific to gun incidences. And the data that we saw from mass shootings, which was, that was essentially increasing our odds of succumbing to gunshots. By having the system we have in place, it affords us mu- the whole goal of the system we have in place now is to get away to create distance to distraction, to increase our chances of survival. And pairing what we have now, which we didn't always have with locked doors, um, with check in procedures, scanning and out of class and those types of things. This is primarily aimed towards reducing access and availability of those weapons in a confined classroom. And you know, essentially the analogy is fish in a barrel. It's helping increase our odds of survival in the potential existence of a very unfortunate situation. Um, for example, if we're in a cafeteria, as a fire teacher, if we're in a gym, if we're in hallways, even after school events, we have a much higher chance of survival in those situations because of the space and the distance and all of those things that work to our advantage. In a classroom, you have a very distinct disadvantage. So that is part of the thinking and the nuance that goes into why I think this is valuable and why I think a lot of schools all around us in Wisconsin have this as, you know, part of the reason why it's it's part of their policy.
Andrew, you have anything else?
I mean, I would, I guess I would like to see it, I I don't know that we would I don't know if we would be ready for a a vote this month. I I would like to really get into hearing from, you know, what's, what's the worst, what's the worst schedule at, you know, different schools? Um, I'd like to take some time to develop if if we're going to do this. I would, I would want it to be a spelled out right to change lockers. I'd like there to be a procedure that you use if you don't think you can you can make it. Um, I I would have to know that it's not an informal, well, if you ask your principal or guidance counselor, we, you know, they'll figure something. I know they would figure out something out for you, but you're not gonna ask and and aggregate. I don't, I don't think you're gonna ask. I would need to know how those things work. I would want it in the policy that the district is providing locks at at a minimum to uh, free and reduced lunch qualified families that not, not, we'll get it donated later. If the first, you know, we'll wait to see how many donations. It's not, maybe that, I would, in policy, the district will provide a lock at least for um, families with free and reduced lunch and maybe for everyone because then you could standardize the the lock and know that you have an override key and and whatnot. Um, I just would wanna make sure there's enough um, enough time to to get all the information and um, you know, we we, we once had two readings of policies too, uh, before a, before a previous administration just um, abandoned it. So there's that too. I, I'm not a, I'm not a no on it. I just need, I have, would wanna see the questions answered. I wanna hear from a variety of students and I'd really wanna know because I I can't picture, I can't picture how I could do it if I had, if I had to get from one end of treble to the other and and back. Um, and I I personally probably could do that with three large textbooks, but there are people with different, uh, you know, different abilities and maybe can't, can't carry three large textbooks and a bunch of supplies at once. I just don't know. But I'm, I'm not a no. I'd just like to not pigeonhole ourselves into necessarily having to vote for it at the October twenty seventh meeting.
So um, to Lieutenant Vire, um, if we move this like to the next works, work session, um, do you think that the district could have some, some information for us to help us make, you know, to answer some of the questions that board members have?
Yeah, I think just to be clear, I would um, I'll draft what I believe are the list of the questions that you have and then share that with the board so that we can do our best to have that ready by October work session, uh, November work session.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay, let's move on. Uh, dress code policy. And so this came out of um, community feedback as well and I, um, there's not a board member that made the recommendation. So I'm gonna go back to going around the table and this time I'm gonna start with um, Andrew, um, and indicate your, get your position on um, any modifications you'd like to see to dress code.
So I do have a, a question. So we, we and we had some intentionality behind simplifying our dress code because we had issues where it wasn't enforced consistently and different, you know, things were meant to to different people and it was over enforced and escalated, uh, got escalated to the police sometimes, which I I whatever we do with dress code, I I do not ever want to see a dress code issue escalated to the police because that's a, that is a, just a horrible outcome and not a good use of the police's time either. So that being said, does our, I I, most of the talk about the dress code is about um, concealment. And I know there's talk about about headwear, but don't we already say in the policy that you can't conceal? And if so, I think it's about enforcement of the existing policy about concealing, then it is about changing what you can wear and the, the climate systems in all buildings is not going to be working a hundred percent right all, all of the time. Uh, we could be the best in the world at it and there will be issues and then, and then what? So I think we have, uh, if I'm wrong, let me know, but I think we have a dress code policy that speaks to you know, like ear buds and things not being able, you know, you can't conceal. So I'm not that interested in uh, more restrictions, I guess.
The, the language in the policy s- speaks, it says student shall not use headwear to conceal items or im- impermissible or prohibited materials or items. Where it's worn for such purposes, they may be required to remove that headwear. I, I believe in the old version of the policy, coats and jackets were prohibited. And the, I know not all board members were part of this process for revising the um, dress code, but there was uh, it was student led and it was um, a collaboration between ICSC and the school board in revising this policy. And there was a considerable amount of time spent on coats and jackets due to the temperature changes in the buildings.
Lynn.
I go back to efficacy again. I do not see this as an efficacious way to address the gun safety issue. I wouldn't spend time on it.
Sam.
I would agree and I think it also opens the door for a lot of bias in um, implementation with it. So I'm not interested in adjusting it.
Jeanette.
And if the student doesn't have the accessibility to a locker to put their big heavy coat in, what are they gonna do with their big heavy coat? I would rather they be warm. Um, so yeah, I'm not, I'm not crazy about this.
Alex.
Every school I've ever taught in has had a locker for every kid. Now I can't definitively in twenty twenty five sit here right now and say that all of our schools have one for every kid, but I have never been in a school that doesn't have one for every kid. Just putting that out there for consideration with everything we're talking about. Including adding fifty lockers at Red Smith seven, eight years ago when we had an extra large enrollment, the district did that. So every kid will probably, if not, almost can guarantee will have access to a locker. That I don't think is ever an issue in our schools especially. Um, it's new to me because we, I think we just changed it last year, like, like you said, with the coats um, and blankets, right?
That was in twenty nineteen.
Okay, and doesn't sound like I'm gonna get much traction on this, but I think that's a huge mistake. Um, there have been instances of gun incidences at others, you know, in the past, not in our school, but in the national media where weapons are concealed in coats. I think that's a mistake. Um, there's nine million other calling items that that kids can utilize to stay warm, including, I mean, there's endless amount of things that they can do now to stay warm. Including the fact that we have upgraded next to all of our HVAC systems in our schools over the last three referendums that they function better than they ever have. Um, and having worked at a lot of our schools, I know that from experience too and and I'm thankful we've done that. So it, you know, yes, there's times where you're not gonna feel optimally comfortable, but I You know, yes, there's times where you're not gonna feel optimally comfortable, but I, again, when we're sitting here trying to weigh the risk of security and thwart. And try to thwart potential major loss of life, not being able to wear a coat, I think is a, is a very easy ask. Um, so I'm all for adding, you know, coach jackets back to the prohibited list of items for our dress code policy. I, I think it's a small thing that we could do, that again, if it prevents, helps prevent untold amount, even just one, it's worth it. Um, and then Andrew's right, you know, I talked to a lot of teachers, I've seen it in my career, I asked, I reached out to more people recently. Um, about the headwear and from, you know, a safety and security perspective. I think our schools need to do a much better job of enforcing not only the locked door policy. Um, throughout the course of class, but also the headwear policy. When I'm in the schools and when I talk to other teachers at schools, I'm not. We just don't enforce it um, consistently, I'm gonna enforce it well and um, you know, there have been instances. Um, where I've received, um, you know, where I've been on staff and we've gotten emails, hey, um, we're looking for the students and they're worried about a serious. A threat and they don't, they, they sent us a picture to try to identify who that kid is quickly and, you know. It, it helps, it matters when you have visibility. Now, obviously, someone in that case, not always gonna be someone who's gonna make sure they're always visible, but. Again, those things exist for a reason, so I think we need to do a better job enforcing that and adding coats back.
Um, so I'll just say that uh, when looking at the dress code policy and I, in the research I did, there wasn't really. Good correlation between dress code and um, you know, keeping weapons out of the schools. Um, and I agree with Samantha, I did read that there, it led down a path towards bias. And um, it wasn't necessarily equitable as when it came to evaluation of the particular dress. So that, and with Alex, it all comes down to coats, um, right? Because that is what you have to open when you go into Rambo Field. And everyone has to check. So when I look at this, you know, whether or not headdress or coats. Um, make it into a dress code policy, I think on a policy review schedule, yeah, I think that's absolutely. In the context of security, coats would in my mind be a way you get a gun into a school and then. It can change in how you conceal it and where uh, after um, you know, you go through entry. Um, it, it's, it's already in school. So um, unless we have another plan. To have kids get to school in a zero degree weather day, they're gonna have coats, right? And so we're gonna have coats on entry and unless we layer our defenses and put weapon detection in. And there so that, you know, we're not winding or or checking coats on entry. I don't see it as a dress code change that would change our security profile um, uh, ultimately because once the guns in, they'll. It, we lose track of it and the coat no longer becomes necessary to conceal it. So um, I'm in the context of security. Uh, I, I don't know that I'm willing to prioritize this um, for an immediate review um, out there, so. And so I heard one in favors and so, so can we just agree that as we move through this, that we'll go on uh, to then the next item? Um, and we can revisit any kind of dress code policy. Andrew.
I, I do think any, I do think a board member presented policy request deserves an up or down vote though. And I think that that should, I think that should happen and um, you know, there might be some. I'm not saying it's a, a huge study by the administration, but I think if the, if a board member is recommending a policy, it shouldn't. Not happen because of, of unofficially counted, you know, table, table talk, right? It's, we don't have a good, really good mechanism for, for that, so.
So yeah, we, we do actually. Um, and what we have is, this is a conversation about security and that's how it is um, noticed. And so in the context of security, we can as a board, you know, create some directive to the district. Any board member can put on an agenda item that they wanna bring forward a policy um, change. And I will give it the time and I'll get it in front of the board. And I'm sorry, I'm saying, we can do that, right? In the context of security, you hear six to one that in the context of security, we're not, we, we don't have consensus to direct the. The district to do something.
Well, yeah, but I mean, the board, um, I, I think there's, I wanna get too hung up on what, how much we're. Asking the, the district to do. I, and I'll also, I, it sounds like I'm hearing there might be some slightly different. Slightly different feelings around maybe a limited thing about outdoor, about outdoor jackets, ma- maybe. Um.
That, that wasn't what I was saying, no. If you heard, you thought you heard that from me.
I would just say, James, I, I agree with you and Andrew, I also appreciate your sentiment, at least the way that I interpret it. Um, you know, if this is something that I really wanna make sure is in policy. And that if we get a fair vote on, um, you know, then, you know, like James said, it's definitely something that, that I would wanna hold him to and now says a board and make sure that we, that we pursue. But within the context of considering an option to further explore with safety right now, you know, i- it, it's not necessary in this particular case. Um, I don't, I don't feel um, especially, you know, getting, getting the feedback that we have, but, but again, I appreciate what I think your sentiment was.
Okay, any other discussion about that? N- next item, um, there was community feedback provided on whether or not we should close campus. Um, and I had interpreted that as a general closure of campus during this. Um, the instruction day, which would include um, lunch. So that's how I'm approaching this conversation. Um, and framing it, i- is that inappropriate? Okay, so um, you started last time. Um, Alex, you wanna start?
I'll probably just keep it pretty simple. Um, I'm open to hearing compelling evidence to um, making that change. But other than what we have going on with our freshmen right now, I don't think that that is a, a good option.
Jeanette.
Um, we heard from the students at the ICE, ICSC, am I saying that right? Um, that this was something, there was. Support from both sides, so I don't think this is a big priority though. Um, and so, um, yeah, I, I agree with Alex. I think that um. This isn't something that we should be looking at at this time, in my opinion.
Samantha.
I think in the conversation of security and reducing access to anything from an external space. Um, it achieves the goal of once kids are in, they're in, and once they're out, they're out. Um, that being said, I think that it's a larger conversation for sure. Um, and I, I agree, we heard some mixed feedback from the students. I would want a bit more feedback from the students. Um, I, I think this is potentially part of a larger conversation within the school schedule and some of those other elements as well. So um, like I said, in the, in the context of school safety, I think that, yeah, it, it achieves, it achieves that once you're in, you're in. And once you're out, you're out. Um, and has good, you know, basis to show that. But um, I, I, not necessarily a huge priority for me. I think it's part of a larger conversation.
Lynn.
I would agree. Um, my personal philosophy is, um, you know, that I, I think students should go to school and be there for the day. But I'm not gonna get into that. I'll be open to the conversation when it comes up in terms of educational philosophy. But in terms of safety and security, I don't understand if um, how this fits in. Um, I would not support it in the context of safety and security. And I am looking forward to seeing. Um, how the closing a campus for the ninth graders works out and whether that has positive. Um, a positive impact that we might wanna talk about, but I don't think it has much to do with safety and security.
Andrew.
I am, I am a, I'm a hundred percent dead set against closed campus lunch for all. Um, and if, 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 if I were ever to. Uh, e- especially in the context of, of school, school security. Um, yeah, I, I don't. Um, I don't really want to pursue it ever. Um, and. Um, we're probably gonna have another conversation about this, but yeah, I would, I don't think it's part of, there's no. I, I, I always like, you know, community feedback is, is good, but I, I didn't, I, I mean, I didn't spend hours and hours looking, but I didn't see much. Research about closed campus being a safety intervention, uh, like we saw other, other things were interventions. So I'm certainly okay with just taking this off the, the table for this, this round of safety discussions.
Before I make any comments, uh, are there, any, is there any information, Chris, that you can bring to this conversation?
I can say with high likability that uh, when the safety report comes back from the assessors, that closing campuses is gonna be recommendation from them. It was brought up at each of the conversations uh, with the high schools about um, the security aspect of it when you've got. If you, if you are gonna go the route of weapons detection, you bring everybody in, then you let them back out. And then you gotta have people there again to bring everybody back in. So it, it, it definitely is going to cause you to have more staff. Longer in your day to operate those systems, if that's what you choose. But the recommendation for closing campuses does increase security according to the way they feel about it.
Andrew.
Okay, so since we're going there now, um, I am not okay with collective punishment of the entire student body. For some minimal, um, you know, some minimal security gain. And, and yeah, if we're doing. If we're doing metal detecting, yeah, it makes open campus more, more complicated. That's why I think we, uh, part of, that's a portion of why I'm not a. Besides all the, uh, all of the lack of evidence for it. Um, yeah, it does make it probably harder and more, more expensive to, to do it. Um. And sure, as, I mean, you can, you know, there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things you could do that would technically make things safer. Or close one route of something, but there's, this is even much more so than the metal detector, something that is a. A, you know, place I don't wanna go. You all, and, and what, cause what's gonna happen next is they're not gonna get outdoor time either because. There's gonna be no reason, there'd be very little reason to say, we're gonna let you on the grounds because everything we've said so far about, about closed campuses. At least you get outdoor time and fresh air if you want it. That will go away under this too. So if, if I ever did support uh, any kind of additional closed campus lunch, it would only be with access to the, the grounds. We are. Lack of. Like that's, lack of um, lack of time to decompress is part of the, the. The underlying problems that get us to the worst problems. And this is gonna, yeah.
Alex.
No, I'll pick up on that. Um, so a couple of different things. I've been a huge advocate for years with my different training and background. And my understanding of kids is especially our kids in our schools, like, we're already looking, we're gonna be considering a schedule model. That reduces lunchtime by roughly twenty minutes. So, so that is, that is valuable time to factor in for kids' ability to decompress. To socialize, to build those relationships, to stay in a positive mindset. And yes, there are sometimes drawbacks to kids having that freedom as we know. But I, I do, you, Andrew, and you're right, you cannot underestimate the value, which is why in a lot of our middle schools. We've also, over the recent years, increased the ability for kids to get time outside, um, decompression time, socialization time. Cause this is a huge positive contributing factor in many cases to the ability to self-regulate. As someone with severe ADHD, that is a small part of the reason why I have no interest. Arguably no interest, aside from a major compelling reason I'm not aware of right now to have closed campus. Um, cause I know how many people like me and others benefit from, from that time, for a lot of different things that they can do during that time. Um, so that was kind of a plea and also make sure everybody remembers when we factor in the schedule consideration. Um, you know, how that thirty-five minutes uh, might play into a lot of different things, whether it's getting back in. If we have closed campus metal detection, whether it's all of those different factors, that is definitely something to, to logistically figure out.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And it, um, when it comes to closed campus and, and everything that we're discussing, there's a lot of change. Um, for the student experience um, out there, so, um, and it just kind of really articulates. The, the problem set, right? Um, we want um, freedom and we want these uh, students to develop skills. Um, and time management skills and I give them as much latitude to do that as well and um, in doing so, we increase risk. Um, and um, there are also negatives as well. So I, I think I'm with the board, um, and that this is not my top priority. And I'd, um, and invite a conversation based on some evidence, um, security. And um, the student experience and an efficacy around truancy and whatever. So that we can have a holistic conversation about this topic versus just in the context of security. Right, um, next, Andrew, will you lead us off on a conversation around SRO staff augmentation?
Um, basically, I think, I think that needs to be, there's, there's cost involved in it. Um, I would want to discuss uh, the model, the, the history of it, if, you know, I don't, I, this. Once upon a time, we paid for, um, we paid for SROs, the city, um. Or no, we paid for crossing yards, the city paid for SROs and it was balanced and somehow. Um, somehow we're paying for the much more expensive price tag on, on SROs who are under the direction and control of the police department. As, as police officers. And I know there are some mechanisms to give us some say in. How SROs get to be SROs as opposed to just being a member of the Green Bay Police, but we don't have full control over that. And if we're funding, uh, if we are funding, you know, well over a million dollars. Uh, writing a check to the police department and saying, here you go, you can supervise how you see fit, you can have, you know, rules that you see fit. I would just want there to be a little bit more board discussion if we're going to add more SROs. I think our policies around SROs and the contract with SROs, this could be, this would be a time to, to look at it. I'm not, I'm not automatically opposed, but the thing is, schools have to have police protection anyways. So I don't understand why it's being paid for one hundred percent to zero percent by the school versus the city or the municipalities.
Lynn.
I, I would have to have a better understanding of the purpose of the SRO program, um, because I don't have any background in this. My, um, my understanding at this point is that the SRO is in the school to help build a relationship between the students. And uh, law enforcement. Uh, for example, I went to the Minoka Hill event um, about a week ago. The family fun fest or whatever it was, and the SRO was there playing with the kids the whole time from start to finish. It was just wonderful. If that's what they're supposed to be doing, think how many more poli- if you're trying to, to um, make it impact safety and security. How many police officers would you have to have in a school to impact safety and security as opposed to. Demonstrating that police officers are your friend and that they're, you know, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't see this fitting in. But I have a lot to learn about it.
Samantha.
Um, yeah, I just would need a bit more information, I think, on the number that we would be looking at at this point, um, and, and where those would be added. Um, so I would need more information, so not, not a high priority for me at this time.
Jeanette.
I like um, SROs in the school. I think it's a good program, but I don't know how many are in the high schools now. How many are we talking about adding and if that is even worthwhile? So just as others have said, I need a lot more information.
Alex.
I have a question um, for staff before my comment. My first question is, um, the number. The number kinda took me by surprise, um, hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand per SRO? Am I understanding that correctly?
It was a guesstimate based on cost of wages, including and then benefits.
Okay, and I, I, yeah, I, I just, I never would imagine it would have been, I, I, six figures doesn't necessarily surprise me. But going up to a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand. But with that being said, I mean, when I think back to all the different SROs. when I think back to all the different SROs, um, most of which, the one, a lot of the ones that are in are just, right now I've worked with at some point, they're incredible. Um, what SROs are focused on these days and what their, the scope of their training and the relationships. And there's a lot of times where they help prevent incidents from happening between the knowledge and the connections that they have with the families, with the kids, with the school. You know, it, you can't, I don't even know if you can tally how many things they help prevent, um, and how many situations they can deescalate, um, just from the relationship aspect. That being said, I have also heard the opposite of what you talked about, Andrew, in regards to, um, you know, the SROs not often feeling like they have enough support or autonomy or too much control. And, uh, uh, you know, where they don't feel like they can effectively do their job sometimes, particularly when students are just doing irrational things that there isn't, you know, there's a point at which, you know, things need to be dealt with because someone is not responding, you know, and they're exhibiting extremely dangerous behavior. So I would like to also know, you know, what, what are the parameters on paper, the relationship, the work we're asking to be done? And, and, and how does that maybe need to be modified? Especially again, when we're talking about possibly addressing serious threats that can a, and do happen at times, especially regarding weapons. So I definitely want to see what that would look like. Um, but I'll say this, I would rather, I, I'm pretty sure I would rather spend one and a half million dollars on 10 more SROs to put one more in each of our secondary schools, especially schools that have thousand, 1,500 kids, 2,000 kids, than, than possibly metal detectors. Uh, because not only do you have a daily threat preventer on some level, as I kind of articulated a minute ago, you also have another resource there if and when there is an active situation to help reduce or stop it. And I think we have to think about that on the front end and on the back end and in the middle of a situation, that is a resource that is there. And if, so I just want everybody to, to consider that option possibly.
Thank you, Alex. Uh, so when we think about the assessment year over year, has it ever been a finding of, of the assessment that we have an, an appropriate ratio, uh, SRO to population?
No, I've never had the discussion or had anyone come to me to say that based on our student population, what we have. I mean, there's also the capacity of the police department to be able to even provide more SROs based on their own staffing.
Um, I, yeah, as far as their ability to, I, I've heard the same, um, in, in a conversation with the mayor. But, um, uh, when I think about this, I, I recognize there's kind of, um, two poles to this, this conversation. And, and one is, are we, um, creating, creating additional police presence i- in a school system? And what does that impact? Because not all of the population is going to see that SRO as, um, a, a friend and, and someone that they trust in- innately, right? And just, um, and therefore it is, I know it's balanced, um, out there. So, um, when I look at this, uh, I think that this is a, um, something if, if someone doesn't tell me the ratio was wrong and that we, so best practice is we should have two or three. I know that at periods of time during the day, we increase, we flex in additional SROs for lunch or whatever, uh, whenever we can to, to increase presence. Um, but, um, when I, I, I don't, I think I agree with the, the majority here that I don't understand enough about, um, the efficacy of increasing by two or by three, because to increase by, you know, five, 10, or whatever, I, um, that's a, a big investment in a security domain that we've already made an investment in, uh, right? We have these officers in schools. So, um, if I'm going to throw additional taxpayer dollars at this, oh, I need to understand what that gets me. And I agree with Alex that, you know, just having someone in there to be an additional, um, presence in the event of an, um, a altercation. Um, but I know we also don't want them necessarily being first to respond to most altercations because of that policing presence, um, out there. So, um, I, I, I heard a request for more information. Um, and I, I put to the district, is there a way where, um, the board can get more insight into the SRO program? Um, so that, uh, as we go through, I, I know that, you know, I'm hearing that this is probably not an immediate, um, need, but can we schedule some, sometime where we get additional information on the SRO program?
Yeah, I could work with board leadership to look at our calendar and determine when in the calendar it would make sense.
All right, thank you. Is everyone okay with that approach? Great. Um, so I'm going to come back to something that was brought up at the beginning, um, as I said I would. Um, and we, the behavioral system calibration, uh, event. The question I just have, because I, I think we've discussed it, is one of timing, all right? It is, is now, are we kind of on schedule to do that again? You said it's been five years. Is this something that we can just go through and, and, and schedule? And manage that with the board meeting schedule, um, to get, uh, an event, um, planned so that the board and district can look back at our behavior policies and take that holistic, um, review? How would the district like to?
In the past, we've done it as a special board meeting so that the focus could solely be on this.
Okay. Um, if we were to look at scheduling, how much lead time would the board, would the district need to prepare for that kind of special board meeting and, and new, in the context of the current calendar? I know I'm asking you off the top and, and putting you on the spot. And if you say you need some time, that's fine. Um, but I, I think that, um, if we're in that window where it makes sense to do the review and it's been five years or, or what have you, um, I, I think that, um, to respond to community feedback, you know, having, uh, scheduling that's, that special board meeting, I think is an appropriate action. If we already have a methodology, uh, we've done this before and it's, uh, we go through the review.
Uh, the people I facilitated are, are no longer with the district, so I would have to.
Okay. So we have, basically we'd have to, um, pull this together and kind of, uh, re-envision this. Okay.
James, I would just also maybe add that, you know, it might take a little bit of time because in going through that, I think it would be important to, again, make sure that appropriate feedback for possible considerations for changes, you know, is, is garnered, you know, talking to possibly, you know, GBA and other staff and, and all, you know, a number of different groups and then had them having time to coalesce, but, you know, what they analyze things and coalesce, what they would maybe want to see, you know. So I, I, I guess I would think honestly, probably a month or two.
Well, so. Yeah, thank, thank you. I don't know what's going on. Um, and that's why I actually, early in the meeting, I asked if we had a partner in this. Um, because I think there are a lot of, um, different stakeholders that are involved, um, in there. So, um, we'll bring it up at board leadership, I mean, and basically I'll just put it as an agenda item, um, because those things sometimes, uh, require some, um, thought and, and we can mature it and, and get it, um, ready and kind of figure out how we can, uh, tackle the subject. Fair? Okay. All right. Um, any other questions or concerns on the topic of security? I appreciate, appreciate everyone. I know that was a long, laborious, you know, um, slog, uh, through things. Yes, Jeanette.
Um, we've been sitting here for quite a long time. We need a break.
Uh, I was gonna say that as well. Okay, let's take a short recess of about five minutes so that we can, um, get to the bathroom and then come back and we'll, um, head into education. All right, let's sort of. We can reconvene? All right. All right. Okay, so, um, I'm going to make, well, I shouldn't make a motion. Um, but what we'd like to do is we have some individuals from the charter, um, update that we'd like to put in front of, um, the daily schedule change conversation, just to, to, to process this. So can I have a motion to reorder? Lynn?
I move that we take, um, education C as our next item and then A and B.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Uh, all right. So let's move on to four C, charter school update. And I appreciate your patience this evening. Um, thank you. All right.
Good evening. Cindy Olson, uh, I am in my role of Director of Secondary Schools. I am also our Charter Authorizer for the district. Part of my responsibility is to provide the, uh, board with an annual update of dates and timelines, um, that are connected to our two charter schools that we have, uh, John Dewey Academy of Learning and NEW Northeast Wisconsin School of Innovation. Um, the, one of the items that you saw in your agenda is the fall update with a list of dates, um, that are, um, connected to our charter schools. Um, and then one of those items is the authorizer report. But before we get into that, I'm going to turn it over to, um, my two charter friends that I have with me.
Hi, I'm Jenny Wosserberg. I'm the principal at John Dewey Academy of Learning.
Jason Johnson, NEW Principal.
Jenny's going to share with us, um, last year, part of a charter's responsibility is to go through an action plan and then review the, um, feedback that they receive from a panel. Um, and so Jenny's going to start by talking about, um, some action plan changes that are going to be made at JDoll.
So you have a copy of the action plan. There's a lot that goes into the, um, action plan. We are assessed. assessed on how we do within the components of our charter. And you can see that in front of you. Some of the things that I'd just like to point out that we are looking more specifically into is we do a lot with our community and our community partners, but we have started to try to get students out into meetings with them. So for example, on this Friday, we have two students who will be attending a symposium, a marketing symposium with adults, and they will be bringing that back to our ambassador group and sharing that information with our ambassador group as to how we can better market John Dewey and market what we do at John Dewey through the project-based learning. Some of the other things that we have done and are continuing to do is one of the things that I noticed within my staff was they needed a better exposure to what project-based learning was because I have a lot of newer staff that have not been exposed to that. So during our P D in August, I asked a number of about thirteen individuals from the district office to come in and communicate and collaborate with my staff into how P B L fits into all of the initiatives within the district. And then we also had the CEO for the Deputy Chairman of Commerce who also came because he is a big part of what we do at John Dewey and believes a lot in what we do at John Dewey, so he was also present. So we did that and staff had a lot of questions to ask and then actually had to take that information back to students and tell students how they can soar as a Dewey dragon. So the staff had to present and the students evaluated them and assessed them just like they would the students. So we then continue with that in our P D last Friday. We went to three different tours of museums in Milwaukee and looked at the products that are there and represented so that staff could have a better understanding and idea of what do exemplary products look like? What does exemplary evidence of learning look like to bring that back to students? So they are also presenting that and all the things that they learned with that back to the students. One of the other things that we are really pushing along with the district is e-portfolios, something for our students to take with them. So we do work with a program called Head Rush, and in Head Rush, they are working with us to create and have students put in their exemplary projects that they have, their resume, Portrait of a Graduate, and assessing those competencies and being able to show how they're growing through those competencies. And so students can take that portfolio with them. That's what we're trying to work on. Not that it's just something within that program, but working with Head Rush and saying, here you go, take this with you, continue to add things to it as you go through your career so that they are career-ready when they're leaving us at John Dewey. Along with that, we, my staff and I over the summertime, as well as continuing through this year, we are based on proficiencies and students have to meet learning targets, just like the rest of the district. We're, we talk about gleam and making sure that they're hitting grade-level learning targets. Our staff specifically are working to put those learning targets with rubrics so that our staff, our students, and our parents, when they look at what the learning targets are and what's expected of them, they can see that based on the distinguished category exceeds proficiency and know specifically what they need to do to gain that proficiency and receive that proficiency. So those are kind of some highlights. We're really big on student engagement, student voice and choice. We are going through the process of changing our schedule and making some more, gaining some more flexibility within our schedule for students. Like I said on Friday, from some of our students leaving and going out into the community, that's what we're hoping to do to continue to do that. And we do wanna, you know, we have advisories every morning and we have advisories every afternoon, and we do a lot of talking to our students and asking our students' opinions on things. I had the opportunity to sub today for one of my staff. And that gives me an opportunity to talk and advisory and ask some really important questions. And I did that today with some of the students and asked about how our changes of schedule are going, what's their opinion on them? What should we change? What shouldn't we change? So we do a lot of that, and that's one of the big things within our charter contract is that voice and choice of students. I don't know if anyone has any questions or, there's a lot in there. There's a whole lot more than just that, but just to, I guess one other thing I do want to bring up. I've been working with three other charter schools in the area, Denmark, Algoa, and West Apire. Phantom Night Charter School. We are creating a consortium of the four of us, and we are doing what we can to expose our staff to each of those buildings and gaining kind of professional development in that way and learning. We do have two students right now that come over from Phantom Night to take part in our personal financial literacy course because they don't have the ability to offer that necessarily except for online. So they're experiencing that along with our students and the community members that come in. And then we're also working with them to provide an opportunity for our students and their students to work on projects together and to give back to the community. So that's another thing that we are working on.
Any questions?
Thanks, Jenny. And then I'm gonna just ask Jason and Jenny to highlight some information from the authorizer report that they'd like to point out from exciting news from their charters.
Thank you. We are in our year one implementation from our last grant that we received. We added sixth grade in a specialized eleventh grade program this year. We are full in the eleventh grade program with thirty students at capacity. We had about ten sixth graders enrolled this year, and it's going pretty well to start the year with having those littles in the building. The grant was for one point one million dollars. We have three more years to spend the rest of that dollars, and we will spend every penny. We recently, in the last year, signed a thirteen-year lease with N W T C, so there's definitely a long-term future in place for our school at N W T C, and we really anticipate growing more with them and providing more opportunities for our students as well. If you looked at the authorizer report, you can see that our students are learning across the board. Our goals are being met individually. We're not real big on the whole school goals. It's always about the individual and comparing their growth to themselves. So that's what we focus on. Every student has one teacher that kind of takes care of them through that whole process, through intervention, through individualized planning, all of that. And so if you take a look at those statistics, we're pretty proud of those.
To kind of go off of ours with our authorizer report, we, we have continued to use STAR, so I know the district is coming back to it, but we have continued to use STAR across the board. And as you can see, when looking at that, you know, sixty-nine percent of our students, based on a longitudinal study, scored at or above the typical growth rate, and that is for the literacy. And then when we look at math, it's about sixty-five point four percent has scored at or above the typical growth rate. One of the things that we have incorporated with the use of STAR is that we have opted to choose the free portion of NearPod. NearPod is through Renaissance and through STAR. And basically, when you look through NearPod, it tells you where students need growth. So we take those lessons and we provide those lessons for students where they are at at that time on an individual basis. And we have seen great growth in what we're doing with the STAR based on utilizing the NearPod within our lessons with students within our advisories.
Lynn?
A question for Jason. What, you said something about a specialized eleventh grade or something. Could you, what, what are you talking about? What is that?
So as a part of the grant, we wanted to, well, first, we identified that we weren't really serving a group of eleventh graders that needed some assistance. So we went out and targeted and recruited kids who had been disengaged from school. So of the thirty kids, almost sixty percent of them were attending between twenty and forty percent. So the first thing we tackled was attendance and re-engagement. So they're with the same two instructors all day. They'll loop with them into the next year. So they spend the first part of the day welcoming environment, getting started, soft skills, twenty-first century skills, things like that. They're spending this year building skills in math and literacy so that they are prepared to start the curriculum in a much stronger place than they would if they just came as a twelfth grader. Students who progress quickly, they'll get access to that curriculum a little faster, and they'll start their college journey a little bit sooner. So I believe we have four eleventh graders who came in, did exactly what we asked them to do, are showing up at a high level, and they'll start classes next week for N W T C.
Other questions? Alex?
I didn't plan on asking this, but in light of our conversation earlier, you know, you guys are in, you know, non-traditional buildings. Are there any security thoughts or needs that you think, or at least is there, is there an indication you can give us that, hey, you know, don't forget about us? About us, we might have some concerns, some unique ones or things that we might need to have assessed?
I think with the referendum that was, that N E W was included in, we're gonna address just about every concern we had. Currently, we're housed in the A G building. And N W T C has an open camp, campus policy, so we have to follow their policies. Starting next year, our building will be able to be kind of segregated off through locked doors that are only accessible through scan cards. So we'll become a more secure facility. We'll also, our lower level in the current building is a major pass-through for the college. We won't have that anymore. We'll have our own cafeteria. So we'll be able to keep our kids a little more centralized and not so much interaction with N W T C. And that was their ask, too. They understand that they have community members coming in and out, so they wanted to make sure that they had that separate space.
At John Dewey, I don't have any concerns at this point. I think that students kind of grasped onto the clear backpack policy and did what they needed to do, and they're there to support each other. And we have our secure, you know, we have other entrances, but we have one secure entrance to our building where students come in and go out. So and when it comes to open campus lunch, we only allow our seniors to take open campus lunch, but again, we are not a population like that of the other four comprehensive schools. So we may have like four or five students out of the, the seniors that we have that do leave campus. But then when they come back, our check. And the same thing with students who go to the other comprehensive schools.
Sure, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to assess especially your unique situation. So thank you.
Anything else? All right. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go back and pick up four A, the revised high school daily schedule. I think David Johns is going to join us back at the table.
Good evening again, Board. Happy to share with you the culminating work of really lots of layers of individuals taking place over the last couple of years that, again, culminates in this schedule proposal for the high schools to be effective at the start of next school year, the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. The work of the high school team actually coincided beautifully. It was by accident, but it was a perfect accident in that they were deeply engaged in the work at the time our Portrait of a Graduate emerged from the community. It provided focus, it provided purpose, and it really gave that team of educators and staff an opportunity to really put together a vision, vision for a future school day for our students that's consistent with getting them on the path to the attributes of the portrait. Through this presentation, I'll share with you the case made for change, some background and how information was gathered initially. I'll share with you the criteria that was established for the two initial prototypes and now what ultimately is coming before you. The feedback and communication loops. We'll take a little time to look at the schedule itself and then propose some next steps. At any point throughout, feel free to ask questions. I might let you know that a little more detail will be coming on something, but happy to engage with you in, in conversation. So as to the case for change, let me begin with consistency. Approximately eight years ago, East High School was granted Board approval to pursue a trimester schedule. That schedule has operated since then while the three other comprehensive high schools, we just heard from charters, I'm gonna separate, talking about comprehensive high schools, have been operating on the, a traditional semester schedule with fixed-length courses. The complexities of managing a two-platform high school schedule system were significant. In fact, we even had a, like a ground-level example here of a struggle with some rostering with one of our students who attends East High School and what that meant for trying to engage in some universal district-wide screening and assessment. So the an easy path would have been to say, well, do we go everyone with the trimester or do we just change everyone to the schedule that the other three high schools had? I was so pleased to work with a group of teacher leaders, G B E A representatives, and leadership as well as district staff in areas like athletics, food and nutrition, transportation, who took this as an opportunity to say, this doesn't have to just be about, let's do one or the other. Let's use this as a, as a chance to really create something better and something new and look out there into the country and see where successful school, how successful schools are built and what are the components of that that we can work into our, into our own schedule for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. The Board's recently approved strategic plan, contains ambitious goals in the areas of achievement, attendance, graduation, success, and engagement among many other things. And they're already paying dividends. Some of the changes that we've made in high school, we came to you in July and talked about a different experience that our ninth-grade students would be having in buildings, smaller learning communities clustered together with a small group of academic teachers who are targeted in their collaboration for those students. We did make changes to the lunch experience for those students. We are a month plus into the school year. What I can share with you now is attendance success, knowing full well that I think as we also heard our charter school folks say, showing up is the first step, and then, and then we take the steps toward growth and achievement together. So in this initial part of this school year, even with the changes we put in place for our ninth graders, that particular grade of students has seen their attendance improve by twenty-five point five percent, matching a similar amount of time this year to last year. In a couple of weeks, we'll have quarter academic achievement data from the team as well, and so we will look into all of those things that are mentioned up here, achievement, on track to graduation. And we'll be using some other measures to validate that those changes we made for the ninth graders were, are serving them, are serving them well as students. We have a long way to go to be the state leaders in all of these. The five-year goals that the Board approved and the strategic plan calls on us to be on the leading edge of achievement, the leading edge of graduation, the leading edge of student engagement. And our data tells us now that we've got work to do and we really have to focus on the experience of our high schoolers to get there. We engaged in surveys with our students and also received significant feedback from our staff and our school leaders, and I'll go into a little more detail about both of those as well. Pause there for any questions you have about what drove us in through this work. So this work was initiated by a calendar committee, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna confuse with all the different configurations of folks. The calendar committee is a representative committee that looks at what the school year should look like. And that committee, when it formed in twenty, it forms every year. It'll be forming again. But that committee, when they came together in twenty twenty-three, were navigating a lot of those institutional challenges that happen when you have two different high school schedules going on at the same time. Like what does the finals period look like for a school on trimester versus a school? So things became pretty clear that we were coming back to the same conversations year over year, and it was all about, how do we just manage the difference between the two? Out of that, calendar committee then grew the secondary school day work team, representative group. We included a lot of middle school educators in that as well, and also did a lot of surveying of sixth graders, knowing that this was the schedule that they would be growing into as it was developed over the next couple of years. That team set design criteria. We followed a design thinking process that I prefer to use. It keeps things less ad hoc. Right off the bat, you establish a set of criteria that really becomes your litmus test for a lot of the decision-making that takes place, and I'll share what those criteria were. Local and national research, again, we consulted as much as we could learn from the top two hundred public high schools in America. We learned a lot of different things. We learned that schools in California have lunchtime and brunchtime. That's true. They also have, of course, beautiful outdoor campuses where things are a lot more, you know, outdoor classes, different, different kind of situations. But we learned a lot. We also looked locally. Our partner in the Superintendent's Office, Mandy Hero. Our partner in the superintendent's office, Mandy Hero, was essential in this work and was constantly calling and visiting and compiling information from, from various districts to help give us the most information we could get to come up with these two prototypes. So design thinking always culminates in two prototypes. You test each prototype through every possible measure that you need. We talked about what would this look in infinite campus? What would this mean for start times, end times? What would it mean for staffing models? What would it mean for credits that students could get? All of those questions are asked with the two prototypes. Before we made any decision about which one to move forward, we turned those two prototypes out to the high school staff. And all along, this committee, this work team is having conversations back at their buildings about what we've been doing in this process. This was the first time all of the high school staff was able to see the two design models and provide feedback on it. Yes?
And maybe I'm rushing things, maybe you're going to talk about this, but I'm interested to know what were the fundamental differences between the two prototypes?
Yeah, it's a great question. So the fundamental difference between the two prototypes was that one of them represented a purely a block schedule structure that would meet every other day. And so you would go through, go to a series of four classes on one day, a different series of classes on the other day. We built one day into that prototype where you saw all of your classes. We looked at some models locally and of course, there's some models. It's typically called a modified block or a modified A B block. And so that was, that was one area. That particular prototype, a lot of aspects of that were well received by the InterCity Student Council because they were asking for something that would have longer class periods and fewer transitions. The other prototype was a, what would we call a consistent day schedule? And that's closer to the one that you're going to see today, recommended for use in 26, 27. That one, instead of having, if it's a Monday, you do these things and a Tuesday, you do these things, every day you go through the same. And built within that is the opportunity to have some classes of longer length, which we would call blocks, and classes of shorter length. We're calling this a hybrid schedule only because we don't really want to cement it as one thing or another. And the reason why we're comfortably calling it a hybrid schedule is it has the opportunity to grow each year with different configurations of how courses are offered. And I'll, I'll point to that a little more when I get to it. Here are the design criteria. These six points were not only the guidance we used to build out the two prototypes, but also what we gave to the staff when we asked them to evaluate the prototypes. So we wanted to hear back from the staff, how, how important was reliability and consistency? The people that didn't like the A B block schedule said, that doesn't feel very consistent to me. That feels like if you miss a day, you really miss two days. And how do students know what classes they should go on a certain day? And it just, it lacked the consistency. Multiple opportunities really pointed to the importance of maintaining a block of time during the day that would provide students and teachers access to each other for additional support if needed. And also think about how long can, can the courses be so that we can embed that support within the period itself and not necessarily call on a student to track down a teacher or get with them. Favorability toward block classes came through the design criteria about a time to apply and deepen learning. That was probably the most universal design criteria. No matter what groups of people got together when they reflected on the current high school schedule, they were feeling like this is a real growth opportunity for us to have classes that are long enough that we can actually have a deeper learning experience. Concurrenty of learning is a phrase that's very common in the IB world. It's common in other areas. And this is where, when you're taking the class corresponds to when high stakes assessments might happen. And so concurrency of learning in an AP class would suggest that you have that class all year long because AP assessments happen in the spring. You wouldn't want to take an AP class semester one, step away from that learning and then take what is essentially a college-level assessment. Similarly, concurrency of learning is also about how we learn certain things. The importance of practice and repetition in a world language class would suggest you would want it daily over periods of time, even if those were shorter periods of time. However, other things maybe like some of our capstone experiences, our applied learning, our lab-based courses, those could live in semester chunks because we would have actually more time per day to spend in those. It's not an overall increase in amount of time because it's double the time for half the year. It's what is each period like? What is each lesson like? And that's where the opportunity to deepen would be. Schedules would be important that student voice and choice are honored, not only in providing input into what the schedule is, that is ultimately recommended, but that also throughout the day and through how classes are made available to students, they would have more opportunities to pick classes, plot classes on their multiple-year schedule. I'm not going to take this this year, but I'm going to park that first semester next year because I'm interested in that. And then connections with families and communities was important to the design team. I think direct connections with that, and I already mentioned the capstones. You heard from our partners at UWGB who offer the Tiny Earth program a couple, about a month ago. Those are the examples of the types of courses that are really going to do well in this blocked environment and are going to give our students opportunities to serve as, serve in internship roles, bring community members into the classroom because again, the clock isn't ticking and the period's almost over. So those are the design criteria. That's what drove the work team and their work. It's what led to the two prototypes and it's what brought us the feedback back on those two. Questions on those? Feedback and communication. I'll share some high-level learnings from the various feedback loops that were in place. In our initial student survey, which was done back in 2023, this is when our students, when asked, based on your ability to stay focused and engaged as a learner, how many different classes do you think would be ideal for you in a day? And we gave them kind of some zones and we heard five to seven. Five to seven was the response that got us about 68% of the sixth through 10th graders that took this survey. Panorama is a student survey that we do each year. It's where we also have some board goals around students' sense of belonging and engagement. Those are two areas that we have significant opportunities for growth, particularly among our high school students. That is what contributed heavily to this idea of we've got to come back to advisory. We've got to reimagine it. We've got to make it something that will serve the end goal of our students feeling a stronger bond, not only with their school, but with each other. The staff reviews of the prototypes and feedback I shared were based on them using the design criteria. We asked them if there was a preference, kind of like the eye doctor, do you like this better or this better? It doesn't mean that there's not a third one that's even better because we asked them, if you could design a third one, what would it include? But if they said they liked one and didn't like another, we said, what, what didn't you like about that one that would make it better? So we asked questions that would help draw out improvement opportunities. Student leaders and ICSC, I think as of last week, it was kind of their third loop through having conversations and providing some feedback about the direction of that. Department chairs are critical to this. I am a, I am a do things with, not do things to person. And the, the future and the, the potential of these block classes has to be grounded in teachers who are self-identifying as being ones who want to start doing this with their classes and are supported within their departments. And so department chairs have led those conversations among teacher teams. And those will continue through the end of this month where we will have then identified which of the classes will be blocked. And our high school schedulers, these are folks that work as assistant associate principals, but are highly skilled in the technical work of making all this now happen in a schedule, as well as the district support team have been important to help, to help us work through some things. Sometimes hear from me, my favorite line with, it's not their favorite line, it's my favorite line with them. I don't want to hear that the computer says, we can't do this. So that was the team that continued to work through some of the, the challenges of creating a hybrid schedule, you know, in the, in the student information system space. Before I move on to the actual schedule proposal, I wanted to share with you, we certainly looked far across the nation to some top high schools in America. We also looked close by. This is just a little localized context for you. The yellow column represents the proposal that I'm about to show you. The other are kind of our most recent neighbors. So I'll just pause and let you take in some of that data. This was current as of Mandy's check this morning at about nine o'clock. And we can come back to this slide two in conversation.
Do you, do you know what open with permission means?
Yeah, what we learned about DePierre's lunch period was that students were able to get through signed permission from their parents, the ability to go off campus at lunch.
Okay, I'll talk to you afterwards.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Because that's not my experience with that.
Sure.
My experience is this opened.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Like I said, I'm happy to come back to this in conversation about the proposal if you want to see that.
Patrick?
I just, I just want to say I'm, I'm very disappointed that a couple of our neighbors have a, have a 25-minute lunch that, that doesn't, that doesn't follow the science. It doesn't give, give kids a break and I am, I'm glad we do, we do better and I'm really disappointed to see that our neighbors are doing 25 minutes at least.
Here is the schedule. I want to first, excuse me. I want to first say that it is presented to you right now as a representation. As the schools start to manage student requests for classes, things like, for example, period two, standing all by itself, there is a shorter period right after advisory, that might not actually be the single traditional course period. That might move somewhere else in the calendar. This is just meant, this is meant to be a representation of what a hybrid schedule looks like. Working within the, first I'll say, same bell times for the start and the end of the day. We shared this with the InterCity Student Council last week. The commitment to continue to explore bell times, align them with the science of our children's brains is important, so important that doing it just for one level of the system was prohibitive and lacked voice around all the other levels of the system that would be impacted around it. What this does by having 50-minute periods and 100-minute blocked periods is add 42 hours of instruction to the school year. And depending on how that would be divided across the number of periods that you have, this is what, this is what the shift would be. It does maintain advisory as a 30-minute protected period of time, all students taking it at the same time. That provides the most access to teachers and support and the ability to group students for various things like grade level meetings, focus groups, and so on. Similar to our current three high schools, it's a seven-credit per year model. Students will attend seven periods. That would be a configuration of some blocks and some traditional classes. There will be some students, based on the classes they take, that they have all seven traditional periods across the whole day. These periods are blockable. That would make them 100 minutes. The encouragement for teachers is 100 minutes really shouldn't be two traditional lessons back to back. It's really important to recognize the need for breaks, the need for movement, the need for having different modalities within that 100-minute period of time. And so that's a next step for us in partnership with department chairs is to really support the teachers that are saying this is what we want to do. Some of them, it's intuitive just because, you know, it's a family consumer science class that even 100 minutes would go by very quickly based on what's happening in there. But we would want to encourage a break or two within those 100-minute block periods. This representation also shows for lunch sessions. The feedback from teachers, while we were seeking a lot of feedback on the structure of the school day, a lot of the feedback came back around lunch. And most of the feedback around lunch was the amount of time that students are in lunch being really the, the factor that is offset by how much they're in class. And so any conversation about blocks or extending class periods, there's, there's fixed moments in this. There's the start of the bell and then there's the end of the day. And so what we're able to do to create 50 and 100-minute instructional times for our students is really take a look at those lunch periods. At the request of the individuals that are involved in supervising lunches, the administrative team that's responsible for students during those lunch periods, we did mock this up to show four different lunch periods per school that divides those populations out. Mr. Becker's comment earlier about the importance of student movement, the ability to get outside, get in a gym, get in a library, get around a game board are all important and I would remain committed to making sure that happens in each of these lunch sessions as well. So I'll, I'll pause here with this on the screen for questions you have about this.
How many credits does a student need to graduate from one of our high schools?
22. Alex?
Compared to the amount of minutes that teachers have for prep time right now, how does this affect that?
The difference in this, whoops, how'd that happen? Okay, that's all right. Yeah. The difference in this comes with the length of the lunch period that teachers would, because teachers would have had, in the current model, they have the same length of time for lunch. Now, that's not the only thing that they're doing, but lunch is able to kind of blur into collaboration, planning, things like that. So teachers will still teach five out of seven periods like they do now. Their periods that they're not teaching because they're a little bit longer, it's, it's like a four-minute difference between what, what they had in the past and what they would have now for that plan and collaboration time. Assignable time is also a part of this model, but that's based on how schools do that.
So if I'm understanding correctly, just to make sure, other than maybe, let's say, for argument's sake, something maybe like eight minutes, planning time isn't really changed? Or am I misunderstanding?
Sorry, I cut you off. The, the time that currently would be for teachers to plan individually, collaborate, or would be for assignable time, it's about a four-minute difference between what is now and what would be in this model, four minutes less.
Can I, can I just follow? When you say four minutes less, the class periods are four minutes longer in this, correct? So currently now we're four minutes less than it would be, or?
No, I'm counting the additional time that lunch provides right now. Yeah, yeah. So even though the class periods are a little longer, when you do the plus and minus of that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Andrew?
Okay, so to me, looking at four lunch periods, because some, there are some, there are some blocks that just have three lunches and then a class will either be divided or it'll be on the, the front end or the back end. To me, four lunch periods is, is the back door to closing lunch for all because it's, it's the structure that makes it possible and it might not be possible at a large high school with three. I don't, I don't ever want fully closed lunch and I, I think that is, this is an attempt to, to do that, to make it very easy to do because we're not going to want to change schedules twice. Right? We're not going to put in something with three lunches. And then, so I, I do think that this just makes it very easy to decide to just, to just close lunch. I think there's other ways we could get, additionally, having two of the four lunch periods only able to run in the middle of a block. That assumes, I think that assumes if it's really teacher and department choice to make, to decide what's going to be blocked, are we going to have enough blocks right off the bat to, to have half of the lunches be? Are we gonna have enough blocks right off the bat to, to have half of the lunches be, you know, that? Does that make sense? Block, three block?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. And as I shared this as a representation, we are doing some work with times and designating which classes go to lunch. At which time to see if, based on again, what the interest in block classes are. Could we run this with only one lunch that is accommodating students in block classes and could we run the other three? The design will, the design that will come to you will show four lunches. Uh, at the request of our school principals and those who are responsible for supervising and managing the lunch periods.
Right, who I think want to, would, would love to have a back door to closed lunch for all, which I'm, I'm not interested in. I think, you know, stu-, I'm, while I am glad we're not going as horrible as our neighbors going down to twenty-five minute closed lunches. A decompression time is important for kids, outdoor time is important for kids. And couldn't, couldn't we accomplish this, the same thing by having a, an eight-period day? That you could block, uh, optionally block or leave alone and just do your blocks, one, two, three, four. You probably wouldn't do it in five and six, because those are lunches and then you could do it again in seven and eight. I mean, couldn't you do that without? I, I mean, I get it, I get that there's, I get that there's voices that want to reduce the, the lunch. I just don't know if that's the right thing to do.
Alex.
I would just real quickly add that I, um, there's a lot to like, but I definitely would, wouldn't mind if. Even if it's a small extent, the lunches were a little bit longer, if there's possibility to tease out what that might look like, wherever you might pull time from. So just something to think about. The other question I had. I lost it once he got me thinking about that. I'll see if I can think of it.
Hey, Kating? Alex.
So I'm getting a lot of feedback from health teachers in regards to new how, the new health curriculum this year. And ultimately, in a nutshell, there doesn't appear to be anywhere near enough time provided for that new curriculum to be flushed out. So that appropriate new sets of lesson plans could have been created to be implemented this year when it's being required to be implemented. So thinking about how tough we are with, it is with time and, you know, in your presentation, we talk about. A lot of these classes, especially blocks, you're gonna have to redo curriculum in order to, you know, to modify it so that it can fit with the schedule. How is there gonna be time to do that throughout the course of this year, especially considering we might not even approve it for a few more weeks? Or theoretically, a month or two, you know, just, I, I have major concerns on. People having, teachers having enough time to put together the curriculum adjusted for the schedule.
Yeah, that's an important question and really what led to this being presented as a hybrid with the potential to grow. Those are exactly the kind of conversations where, um, you know, people might sit in three different places on this. They might say, I've always envisioned my course as a block and now I can finally do it, great. Um, and you know, they may have mentally been organizing their content for that. There might be others who say, um, I would really be interested in that, but I'm not sure how I can get it ready this year. And then, of course, others who, whether it's through concurrency or learning or other reasons, would say, mine makes a lot more sense to teach every day for the whole year. So trying, you know, just really listening to folks who are in that place to make sure that we can support them with configuring their courses. So that we can get the results of this that we're looking for. We're not looking for accelerated compacted learning in these block classes. We're looking for students who are able to engage at a deeper level, more reflection, more consolidation of learning. And then the course has to be structured for that, so I'm, I'm sympathetic to that and would want to make sure that we can support. Each class when it's ready for that.
And I appreciate that and that makes sense, but I just want to make a, a further push that there is. Time given for that work to be done, because ultimately, teachers are the ones who need to write those lesson plans and come and allocate. And garner those materials and make sure that they're ready for them to be able to deliver. So if there isn't, you know, just flat out time given, i- it's just not gonna happen. And furthermore, East is gonna have to switch trimesters, so essentially, everybody's gonna have to, unless I'm missing something, they're gonna have to redo their thing. Whereas some other high school teachers, it'll kind of be a, more of a seamless transition, so I just wanted to put that in there for East. And to make sure that we're really making sure that we allocate time for that stuff to happen, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that and I will also add that the East teachers who were on the team that designed what you're seeing here. Incredibly impressed, they were the first to put their hands up and say, we've already imagined the course to be seventy-minute block. You know, let, let us help with this whole idea of what it looks like to take a, a class that met for a shorter period of time and extend it. So very appreciative of them too. So here's some next steps, I alluded to these. This is the month where we are identifying those classes to be blocked through engagement with the department chairs. Who are in significant, significant teacher leadership roles as they do that work. We'll seek board action from you on the twenty-seventh. Motion that I'm putting out there now is that the board would vote to approve the transition to a consistent hybrid schedule. Across all four high schools in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. That motion exists primarily because nine years ago, the board voted to allow East High School to do something different. And this is to bring the schools together in a consistent schedule. Based on your action and any guidance that comes from that action, um, we'll continue to fine tune this in Infinite Campus. So that our students can start engaging in important conversations about course selection and scheduling in through the winter and into the spring. And as you said, Mr. Minow will be supporting the teachers who will be wanting to block for this upcoming year all along.
So question for you. You know, Alex had just mentioned kind of timing and, and when we would have to take action. So it's scheduled for action on the twenty-seventh, right? We had ICSC come in this last week and we had the conversation and they were concerned about classes being available for scheduling. And scheduling starts in the December timeframe, so. I, I just want the board to know that on the twenty-seventh, there's action. There's jeopardy to the plan if we roll it into the next month or no. Because I, I know we're running up against, we have to be ready for people that want, want to start selecting classes. And I know that you said that it's a two-phase process. They say, you know, yes, I want to take these, and then there's a scheduling component. In December, are we expecting to be able to inform the students of the courses that will be offered in block?
On this timeline, we would, for the purpose of what we're actually asking the students to do, uh, November and into December. Is simply identify from the course book, which you've already approved, just the courses that we offer, which ones they want. And then the second conversation that would happen with them would be about putting that, putting the pieces together into what their school year would look like.
Okay, so they do not, in order to do phase one, they don't need to know that biology is a blocked course, physics is not. Okay, thank you.
Nope, in fact, we'll ask them at that time what courses, and of course, those are, those are even deeper conversations. Because those are about courses that connect with your interests, your aspirations. Um, and we ask them to actually identify more than would ultimately go in a schedule, which gives us that chance to work with some different configurations. Once we get the block situation.
Questions? Yeah, Andrew.
Okay, so we, we don't necessarily have to have a decision here because it's de, it's decoupled from course selection? Like if we did need more time to decide? Is that right?
I know that the people who are putting the backbone together in Infinite Campus are. They're working right now in what we call a sandbox mode, so that they have something ready to go. But the answer to the question, do we need to know what's blocked for course selection? No, we do not.
Okay, so. Knowing what courses specifically, so that's one thing. But is the twenty-seventh tied to an implementation timeline where you see jeopardy? If we let this go into November, you're gonna compress like setup and infinite campus programming or whatever. Because you, you mentioned that you've kind of had to address, don't let the computer say we can't do it. I interpret that as, you know, there's configuration to do and, and there might be some challenges and some testing. So I, I guess I need you to say. You, you know, we need to know right now, because we have people that I need to turn on and, and they need to start working for real. Instead of testing and piloting and, and figuring it out, and is the twenty-seventh the date?
The twenty-seven would be the date. If the board would be. If the board would be considering anything other than voting for us to move ahead with a hybrid schedule. If we're talking about plus or minus minutes on a couple of things here or there, um, that's a different conversation. But the ability to proceed with our plans to build out the block options and to start working with those teachers, the sooner we can do that, the better.
Okay, that, that's what I needed to hear is, is what, what's the critical path, right? And if the critical path is I need to get approval on the block schedule. You fairly represented the schedule as representative, right? And that there is, there is some, still some planning to do in the middle of the day. Andrew.
So. I, I support a hybrid block schedule if there is, assuming there is actually. Teacher-led, teacher-driven, including rank and file choice about which way different courses will go. I think it's, I think it's great and I think it's better than all one way or all, all the other, because there are some. We learned from East, there are some things that AP classes don't, don't fit right. Great, however, what, what I think is, what I think is going to happen, because I've, I've been around the block a few times here. Is that we'll get, we'll do a motion, we would do a motion on the twenty-seventh to approve the hybrid. And then we would be told not to, it's not our place really to operationalize two minutes here, two minutes there. And it's not our, and it's not our place, and then we would just end up with, with, with that. And that's what. This, the, the minutes of the schedule effect, you know, I, I would, and yes, it is because I would like to see us maybe get the lunch. A little bit longer and maybe do three of them instead of four. I just don't want to see, you know, to, to me, whether I support this, the, how, how it's done is as big of a deal to me. As what we're doing, I, I would like to do it, but I, I want to have meaningful in, opportunity for input to, to changes. And I don't know what that looks like if we vote to proceed with the concept on the twenty-seventh of October. Where, where does that, where is the chance for us to weigh in then on the, what it looks like?
Lynn.
I will be prepared to support this on October twenty-seventh and I don't need to have any input as to how long classes should be or anything. I really appreciate all the work that a whole bunch of people did to put this together, I trust them and I will support it.
I will not allow this to be turned into a trust issue every time there is issue disagreement. I'm sick of it, I'm not gonna have it, it's been going on for years, maybe the first time you've said it. But I, turning every piece of disagreement into a trust issue, I will not stand for it.
Okay, so I appreciate your position. She, she made a statement, which is her right to do and I don't know that she turned it into a trust issue. Any other statements? So you have an ability to speak, she has ability to speak, right? How you interpret an exchange is, um, is your responsibility. So does anyone need any other information in order to take a vote on this on the twenty-seventh? Because if it's critical path and we need to do it, let's make sure that you're, you, you ask, Alex.
Yeah, just reiterating, I, I want to at least see, you know. Other options for modifying, um, you know, particularly the lunches, whether it's the, the quantity or the time. You know, and what that might look like, um, that is probably, I think, the one thing that I want to see as, hey, maybe we could do this, maybe we could do that. This might, what it look like, it might, you know, and what, how it might affect things, I definitely want to see. I like, I like the schedule, I just want to see options for some slight modifications. I, I worked with thirty-minute lunches my entire career at the secondary level. And I just think even though it's not twenty-five, thirty still really sucks, it's really tough, it's stressful. And even with four lunches, even if you, even if you factor in, you know, you barely have enough time to scarf your food down. And I just, I would like to see, even if it's five minutes longer, it went to forty, if there's a way to do that, that's the one thing I would want to see to really.
So you're, you're saying that it's not thirty, the, the proposal's thirty-five?
Right.
Okay, so you're wanting to go to thirty-five to forty, but that's not including passing, so that's five on each side. So it gets us to forty-five, I understand, but okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't factor in passing.
Sure.
As part of lunch.
Okay. Anything else? Samantha.
Just a very quick clarification and I'm sorry if I can't locate it in the materials. The comparison chart between what the proposed is versus what our neighboring districts are doing, was that shared in materials or was that?
It's in the memo, um, it's linked where it says consulted schedules of surrounding districts, yeah.
Okay, any other statements? Questions, Andrew?
If they came back on the twenty-seventh with. Forty-minute lunches, I could probably vote yes on the spot. If we're, if we're looking for to get to seven zero.
Thank you. All right, thank you, David.
Thanks. You get me again.
Well. Okay, um, next on the agenda is for B systemic assessment calendar update. David.
Thank you, Kinsey's gonna put that up and, um, this is linked in Board Docs if anyone wants to take a close look at it. This is the time annually where we share, um, uh, as an FYI to the board. The assessment calendar for the year. I'll point out, and it's listed in the memo, I'll point out what you would expect to see differently in here than from years past. First and foremost, um, this. This calendar shows elementary, middle and high all just collapsed together. The first page and a third are all statewide DPI level assessments. So these are assessments that we are required to use in various ways throughout the district. Some of them are used to assess language proficiency growth for our ML students. Of course, the forward, the ACT, those are all included here, if you'd scroll down, please, Kinsey. A little further, and we get down to underneath the green bar are the district level assessments. And so you saw some hours ago, uh, a, a deep dive into the screeners that are used. And so screeners will be new on this as we're using them fourth grade through tenth grade. Like I said, you've got a, a profile of those and what, and what they're all about. The other thing that I'll mention here is that we've identified Panorama, Universal SEL Survey. As one of our district-wide, it's, it's not an assessment, it's a survey, that's why the heading of the document is, is assessments and surveys. That is the one where we gather longitudinal information about our students' sense of belonging and well-being in our schools. Down below, uh, in the footnote are some other assessments that are in use. The board has approved language, bilingualism and bili literacy. As being such importance that we have a five-year goal around it. And so we do use the Apple assessment, not only as a measurement of growth in bilingualism, bili literacy. We also use that as the validator for the seal of bili literacy, which is really the, the, the capstone experience for that. So those are mentioned there and well, as well. I pointed out the things that are new and different, several things have come off. Mathematics, uh, uh, district interim assessments for older students. That was mentioned at the table here earlier, um, we're now using the Star Screener for that.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Are we, are we done? Okay. No, with David. Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to operations, oh, five A referendum updates, are we all good still? Okay.
All right, I'll I'll jump right in. I'll kind of go quickly through this from a high level, there's not I would say anything at risk with the projects or anything of note. Progress for all the projects is on schedule. I will say from a financial standpoint, I don't think I've been a part of three simultaneous projects that have had so few change orders from award to construction. Next to nothing that hasn't been, that has been not owner requested. So financially and schedule-wise, overall health of the twenty-four referendum projects has been has been phenomenal. So I'll just kind of breeze through here and then leave for questions at the end regarding the the current active twenty-four referendum projects. As this team knows, Washington Middle School has completed, we have received closeout documents to close that project financially as well. The first one on here is Star Elementary. That's what we're seeing is footings coming to an end. And the phasing of the building from, I hope I'm, I should know this by heart by now, but from east to west, I believe. Sorry, west to east, I was wrong. You'll see that structure coming out of the grounds. And within that, the western part of that, we actually now have mechanicals going inside of that building. We have roof going on that building. And you'll see that again progress in phases from from west to east. So upcoming here, as you can see, and I'm looking at my screen, which is DODI. Structural steel ongoing, the roofing starting, as I noted. And those MEPs going inside the building, as you can see in the pictures here, you can see some ductwork and some plumbing inside the building. Some more shots from the inside, you see some ductwork in the center there, HVAC going up and roofing going up on the upper left corner. So enclosing that building for winter, as you can see, that that's really going to help our schedule. And if we keep a mild fall/winter here, just lower cost for heating and things like that throughout the winter. A few more shots, but you can see the structural steel more towards that east end is still being erected. And then quickly, DODI, DODI site, you might notice there's a a little bit of a lull in the construction. That was planned with our precast walls just being a little further out. We've tried to accelerate the precast walls of the gymnasium. Unfortunately, the rest of that construction hinges on that. Nexus has been able to push some more interior work as far as underground plumbing and things that we would typically wait for walls to be up. So from an overall construction standpoint, again, not a concern with the schedule, they just had to adjust kind of when some things are going on. And this one might be subject, which it was always planned for a little more winter condition work. And just some more shots of the footings and things prepared for when those precast walls come in, then they can start to erect steel and get that building enclosed. Site work has been taken about as far as it can go, and as you can see, getting the grass to make sure we don't get any washout from the site, things like that. And then Chapel is in in as far as phasing with these projects is the last to start. They will quickly catch up to DODI, as you can see here, site work and footings have been poured. Next steps, you'll start start to see that precast and and structural steel through the fall and winter start coming out of the ground. That playground is also, I haven't stopped out yet this week. But their playground will be opening up this month with their their full turf and equipment. This hasn't changed from the last time we met, progress. Beaumont is bidding in November, so we should see dollars, that dollar amount change as we award Beaumont. NEW is also going to be bidding this winter. So we'll see that jump there. And then Lincoln is scheduled to bid early spring. And then, as I noted, we have not seen a significant, significant amount of change orders. I think it's to be seen with our bid process with NEW, Beaumont and Lincoln with inflation and tariffs, if we have much impact. But that has not impacted, in fact, we've we've seen very favorable bidding to date. So with that, that's just a few notes here for the sites. Nexus did another interview with a student at at Chapel. And then just some updates, as I noted, Lincoln design ongoing, Beaumont nearly done with design, and then just some other high-level updates. So with that, any questions on the twenty-four referendum?
Good. No. Thank you very much.
Okay, nevermind.
Okay. You can ask. All right, we're gonna go on to five B, the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget. Welcome, Ms. Roble.
As we enter into the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, our district is no different than many other districts throughout the state where we are facing budgets that we've never seen before. And we can really link it back to the inadequate funding for public education. This is unprecedented, what we're about to present to you. And Angie has all the details to share, and we're prepared to respond to any questions you have.
Thanks, Vicki. Good evening, everybody. I am going to go through some highlights of the twenty-five, twenty-six annual budget. As as every year, this is one out of two meetings in October where I come before the board. Tonight, we discuss the the reality of what our budget situation looks like. Important date is October fifteenth, which is on Wednesday. That date, we will receive our certified equalized aid numbers. We will also receive our private school voucher numbers. Both of those can impact the mill rate. I don't, as far as estimating goes, right, we'll we'll kind of talk about what the numbers are, what their estimates are. But I don't foresee a drastic change in the mill rate, hopefully. But I'll come back in October, October twenty-seventh in front of the board. We'll go through the revisions, we'll talk about how that changed the mill rate, if it did at all. And then the board will adopt and vote on the budget. And then we'll also adopt and vote the levy certification on the twenty-seventh. Touchy. Touchy. Okay. I always have so much luck with these, and this is a new one, so good luck. Well, that'll get through our slides pretty fast if I keep fast-forwarding, right? So the purpose of the meeting, this is the law, right? We have to, we have to discuss the budget, board has to adopt it. But I think it's really important to note that we are talking about tonight, our discussion surrounds our general operating budget or Fund Ten. So that is what what we're talking about, our fund, it's funded by state aid, property taxes, federal funds via grants, and then also includes that sixteen and a half million dollar operational referendum that will be falling off in a couple of years. So here, here's one of the slides. So we are projecting, as Vicki had had kind of insinuated, that we're projecting this year a projected deficit of three point six million dollars within Fund Ten. And it's really, I think it's really important to kind of run through, I know that we've heard about what the state budget is, but we really need to look at how that impacted Green Bay to come to how we got to a three point six million dollar deficit this year. So as a result of Governor Evers, if you recall, he had that one-line veto power, right, for that three hundred and twenty-five dollar per pupil increase in the revenue limit. So that has been extended for the foreseeable future. So what that means for Green Bay is we are up to eleven thousand six hundred and fifty per pupil on the revenue limit, which equates to about three million dollars in additional revenue in Fund Ten. It's very important to note that after these next two years of that three hundred and twenty-five dollars, that it's the eighteenth consecutive year that state caps have trailed behind inflation. So as our costs increase as a district, wages, benefits, right, construction costs, supplies, transportation, we're facing those increases, yet we are not receiving the funds from the state to reflect inflationary pressures that that we feel every day within the district. Another thing that had happened, also pretty unprecedented, as with that increase in the per pupil, that three hundred and twenty-five per pupil revenue limit adjustment, the the state legislature did not put any more aid or did not provide any general aids to offset that increase. So we we've talked about that in the past, but really what that means is that shifted that cost or that increase in levy to the taxpayers, because no additional money was put in to offset that increase. As far as as far as the district goes, we did see a reduction in state aid overall in the amount of three point three million dollars this year. Another thing that was provided through the state budget was that increase in special education reimbursement rate to forty-two percent and forty-five percent. Very important to note that because this budget for special education reimbursement is fixed, that means that as all school districts increase in costs in special education, that just leaves a little bit less for everyone. So we are anticipating that that forty-two percent, that we it will fall short. We are, we are anticipating we're going to receive about three point one million in revenue in Fund Twenty-seven. However, that's about thirty-nine percent. Some say I'm being optimistic, which is very unusual, but we're 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 assuming that thirty-nine percent. High-cost special education funding, an increase of approximately two hundred thousand dollars is what we have set aside in in Fund Twenty-seven. Keeping in mind that the Fund Twenty-seven budget is about sixty million dollars this year. One thing that kind of slipped through, I'm not gonna say slipped through the cracks, but that wasn't very vocal or what we didn't hear about was the increase in those per pupil amounts that we are paying for open enrollment kids, private vouchers and independent charter schools. I have a chart on the next slide that we can kind of look at what that looked like. But for for Green Bay, we had a six hundred and forty dollar per student increase for the private school vouchers and for independent charter schools, which equates to about a million dollar increase in expense within Fund Ten. And then, in addition, for the open enrolled students in and out, we will receive an increase of one thousand one hundred and forty for those students as well. I think it's really important to note here that our net open enrollment out and in decreased by seventy-three. However, because of that large increase in the amount that we're paying per student, we're seeing an increase of two point two million dollars net increase in expenditures. So if you do the math, right, we receive three, yeah, don't do the math, James. So this is right, this is really a picture as to why we are where we are currently. So here's that chart, this just kind of shows payment increases for vouchers. ICS is independent charter schools, which is our kids, our district kids that go to New Leaf up in Howard, Swamaco, and then the open enrollment numbers. So as you can see, Green Bay students is down on the bottom, so that base is what, you know, the eleven thousand three twenty-five, but we're adding that seven hundred and forty-two per pupil categorical aid, which is outside of the revenue limit. Because technically, right, that is, that's money that we are getting for all of our kids. But as you can see across those two years for the next state budget, the difference of how how much was increased for all of those different categories listed on the left in comparison to what public schools received, we are by far the lowest. So private school vouchers, so we are anticipating, or I'm estimating that we're going to increase about a million dollars in private school vouchers. So total, that thirteen point seven million dollars will be levied within our revenue limit for for twenty-five, twenty-six. And again, we'll get those numbers on on Wednesday. So the revenue limit formula, this this probably looks familiar, I think it's really important, this is how public schools are funded. Eighty-five percent of our revenues is coming from state aid and from property taxes. So basically, what you're seeing here is anything, like any increase in equalized aid that offsets our property tax. So when I talked about that three point three million dollar decrease in aid, that naturally increases property taxes, because that's an inverse relationship for for the revenue limit formula. So to just to keep in mind and reiterating the fact, revenue limit authority, that is driven by the number of students that we have in Green Bay. So that is the the that three-year rolling average. So as our enrollment declines, which we'll cover in the next slide, but as our enrollment declines, we are receiving less revenue every single year because of how how we're funded in the state of Wisconsin. So September membership count, so this is showing, you know, as we have talked about, we are declining in enrollment, that is no surprise. We decreased about three hundred and eighty-six FTE. If you recall, FTE is different than headcount. So this is the, this is the formula that we use for the revenue limit, so we did decrease by three hundred and eighty-six FTE. And again, why is that important? It's important because our revenue is decreasing every single year, because that's how we're funded. This is not a Green Bay issue, this is a nationwide issue, right? Birth rates are declining, so here's, here's the result of that. So our mill rate history, so this is just showing us where a mill rate is, we'll talk a little bit about how we got here. But important is, is that the reason why the drop is because our equalized value increased again at at a very high percentage. So on average, equalized values across the district increased by eight point seven seven percent this year. If you recall, last year, seven point nine nine percent. So what that means for taxpayers is that their property value, right, your fair market value is going up, and that is going to affect how much, you know, how much you're going to take on for for that levy. So this is a a chart that shows that equalized value from last year to to this year, to twenty-five, twenty-six, that year-over-year change. But overall, on average, eight point seven seven percent is is that increase in fair market value. The total school tax levy, because of the reasons that we'll go through, has also increased by five percent. So we are going from about a hundred and nine million to a hundred and fourteen million. So that five percent change is a five percent increase in our overall levy. Here's the reason for that increase. We've touched on it a little bit before, but that three hundred and twenty-five per pupil increase that all districts were allowed to levy for did not have an offset of that general aid. So that fell on, that fell on the community, it fell on the taxpayers. The three point three million in reduction in state aid that I that I touched on before, that again is an inverse relationship. So as we decrease or as we lose that state aid funding, the levy goes up. And then the one million dollar increase or estimated increase in private school vouchers, that will also get added to our levy. So that is why overall, we're seeing an increase in our in our levy this year. So this is just a budget summary of Fund Ten revenues. Again, you know, we've declined in revenues, so we're at about three hundred and nine point three million in revenues. That big piece, right, that big green piece, that's our equalized aid. Like I had talked about before, equalized aid and then the tax levy, that is about eighty-five percent of of our funding that we receive. All of the other little pieces of the pie, federal dollars, grants, things of of that nature. And then our Fund Ten expenditures, it also should come as no surprise, salaries and benefits are are a big portion, about seventy-seven percent. That also includes, when I say seventy-seven percent, that also includes Fund Twenty-seven, which is a majority of, excuse me, majority of Fund Twenty-seven is is benefits and wages our staff. One thing to note here, so that operating transfer, that yellow piece of the pie, that is our thirty-two point four million dollar transfer to special education. So although we received, you know, approximately three million, three point one million in Fund Twenty-seven from that reimbursement increase, that increased rate in reimbursable expenditures, we are still transferring over thirty-two million dollars to cover Fund Twenty-seven. Basically, what it means is already in Fund Ten, right, we're we're receiving less, we're not receiving the inflationary increases that are needed. We're transferring that money. We're transferring that money over to special ed. So we just are are really fewer and fewer resources. To serve our students, all students, including those with with disabilities, unfortunately. Contracted services include, so that's a pretty, that green piece of the pie, about 19%. But what's important is what's included in there. So open enrollment is in there at 22.9 million dollars. Our transportation cost is in there, almost 7 million, and then our vouchers are also in there at 13.7. So not to be confused about contracted services because there's a lot that's included in that category. When it comes to reporting for school expenditures.
Can Lynn ask a question?
Oh, sure. Sorry, Lynn. Yes.
To that slide. Yes, I'm testing you, Angie. I know you can do the numbers, but can you do the projector? Okay, anyway, I wanted to know, okay, open enrollment, 22.9 million. Does that mean we are paying other districts for students to enroll out of our district?
Yeah, so the open enrollment number are in or resident students that are open enrolling out to other districts. We get to count those kids when it comes to revenue limit purposes. So we get the 11,650 for those kids and then we're paying out the 10,100 or whatever, whatever that is. Over the next couple of years for those open enrolled kids out. Did that answer your question? So budget summary, just all the other funds, we don't talk about them, not that they're not important. It's just we focus on our, our general. Our general fund, but overall total expenditures is about $567 million. So what's next? We've been talking about the structural deficit. I feel like every time I come to the table, I wish I could give you better news. And right, I always fail. So it's my goal by the time I retire from this district that there will be good news. So the 16 and a half million dollar operational referendum ends after the 2627. So we have two more years of that. Because the state budget didn't pull through as to, you know, we, we didn't get as much or we didn't get as much as we needed. So the state budget didn't address our needs as a public education, right, public school. So our ask will be more than that 16 and a half million dollars, you know, more than we had hoped for. On November of 26. So we will start planning. We'll be talking with the board on on what that looks like next steps. But strategies to close the gap for next year include, right, we've got consolidation of three schools. We're continuing to right size staff to align with declining enrollment, program evaluation. And all of the other things. So that's kind of what's next. So we'll be coming back to you after we kind of. Look at the numbers after they're finalized in October and we'll talk about next steps for November of 26. Any questions?
Questions? Janette.
So we didn't get funded properly from the state. What ha- has happened with federal income? What have we lost from that, if anything?
So we are still waiting on the results of federal income and what that's all going to look like. There are some, right? We've talked about a little bit about some of the title grants are going to be. You know, combined and then, you know, shifted to the state, but we don't know the, we don't know what that looks like, but for 2526. You know, we know that we're getting what we're getting. What's in the budget is what we're getting and then we'll just monitor and and, you know, and and see what it all. All of it unravels, but right now we don't, we don't know much.
Other question? So I, I don't make political statements from the table. That's just not been something I've done and I'm not going to do it tonight. I just want to. Say something that's factual and important. So in the face of insufficient funding with the $325. Not being offset by state aid. Increased voucher expenditures, increased open enrollment expenditures. Budgeting is still just a set of choices, right? And it's a set of priorities. And it has to be known that in the face of all of that, we decided. Not to balance the budget on the backs of teachers, right? We made some very specific moves to make sure that cost of living increases, steps and everything remained intact. Because we recognize that that is important. And in my day job, I would have never voted for this budget. We don't start a year in deficit spend and we may have to go into reserves. And we have about a year to figure this out because we, we, we need to make sure that when we start asking for operational red- for end terms. We understand this better. So I just, it, that has to be said that we made choices. To make sure that we supported our teaching staff and those professionals that we care for, that care for our kids. And it complicates decisions and that we make when it comes to other important things like security measures, right? And we may not be able to put optimal, you know, solutions in place because of that, right? So it just has to be said.
I, I appreciate seeing that we're not trying to scramble for 3.6 more million dollars in cuts. I think that would be. However, you would do it would be devastating to, to kids and to staff. You know, we have, we've been running a fun balance that is. Not something should be going to all the time, but it's definitely, we're running higher than minimum recommended and we have a very high. Credit rating. So I think this was a very good. Very good time to use, use a little bit of that and then figure out for next year. Figure out for next year, help guide us to what we want to do in a, for the next operational.
Any other questions or? Right. Thank you. And not really. Yeah, good job. Okay, we're going to move on to five C, the security, school security drill review. I think Kale's going to come and present that.
No presentation, yeah. This is our annual requirement for officers of school safety, submission of the drills recorded. And notification to the board of those drills.
Right, and I appreciate that. I apologize. And if you have questions, it can't be detailed questions. We can't, shouldn't say anything about what you see on the, on the reviews. Any, any comment, discussion, Lynn?
Just want to say that I read it and I appreciate that. All of the schools did what they were asked to do and those that had little. Things that had little issues or problems, they all stated a plan for how they're going to solve the problem. So it was very encouraging.
And obviously Chris's knowledge of the requirements for that submission helps guide those schools. So that's really important. To have someone that knowledgeable of that process. I've had to do it in a past life, so I, I understand that too. So I appreciate Chris and the, the school's efforts.
All right, we're going to move on to five D, job description update. Kale?
So this job description is bringing back a safety and security coordinator. An updated position when Chris Coller's position was transferred to a manager position. I think tonight. The board spoke about a few things and had some notes just to help understand what this job description has been revised to. And I guess the first note I'll say is safety, security has, has expanded scope. When this job description was first created. We can talk from technology, from synergics to our cameras, to our badging. Radios, IDs, all that, that scope has expanded. It's also expanded into not only just the security aspects of that. But, you know, kind of alignment with our thriving workforce as far as investigations, claims, things like that. Which is also encompassing of our current safety and security manager. On top of that, with safety, as we look at. CPR training, AEDs, I can go on and on about that scope expanding over the years. That has all been updated in this job description. Also, from a facility standpoint, as we look at building code, asbestos, things like that. Again, safety and security. So that continues to grow and that's what we've incorporated in this job description. And then I think the other reason, again, obviously expanding this. As we look for some redundancy in our safety and security, a district of our size. As we look at comparable districts, as we look at the scope that has expanded. Having redundancy and expertise in these areas is very important. Having qualified individuals. That understand the requirements as us as a school district, what we have to do. And then also just requirements that all businesses. And workforces as large as, as ours has to follow. So some redundancy there in our, our safety, security specific position. Is another reason for this job description change. And then the last one would be. You know, the board mentioned today being proactive and not reactive. As we stretch the scope of this and we put that on the shoulders, there's a lot of people involved in this. But that expertise of a safety, security coordinator and manager are very important. And when you start to spread that scope too thin, that's when we get a little more reactive. I think a great example of, of door checks, things like that, managing those types of things. Becomes within these job descriptions, very important. And not letting those things kind of slip through the cracks. So there's a few reasons here for this. And you'll see a lot of, again, redundancy with this position in the manager, but. Again, a district of four high schools and our size. I think the need for this, this change is important.
Thank you, Kale. Questions? None? I would just say that I agree with you. It's actually astonishing that, you know, we have one resource that leads that function and, you know, vacations become a problem, right? So I appreciate the job description and the direction. Okay, so that is the last agenda item on this very short meeting this evening. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Lynn, will you please read? The motion to adjourn?
I move that the board recon, that the board convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, section 1A and F. Considering financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data. Of specific person's preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems. Or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public. Would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data. Or involved in such problems or investigations to it for the purpose of holding expulsion hearings under Wisconsin statute 120.13. Section 1C and E3.
Second.
Kinsey?
Becker?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Aye.
Minow?
Aye.
Cannell?
Aye.
Meister?
Aye.
We are adjourned in closed session.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts board of education meeting. Please visit the school districts website. www.gbaps.org for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025. Or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.